We have a very full agenda tonight, but as always, we want to be sure that we open this up as we always do for, we're going to skip the liaison tonight in the interest of all of the things that we have going on. But as we always do, we open for public comment. Is there any public comment? Yes.
You've got to identify yourself, Andy, first.
Andrew Friedman.
Yep.
And you're good. So my name's Andrew Friedman, this is the set, and I'm speaking on behalf of Becky Lieberman, and Alan Roth, and myself. The three of us are part of the budget parenting for the high school. And last night the superintendent gave us a preview of the proposed budget cuts and what they will need from the high school. The three of us were very discouraged by it, sustained by what we heard about. And although there are many proposed budget cuts, we feel that the following proposed changes will have the greatest negative impact on education at the high school. The first one is loss of approximately four full-time teachers, maybe more depending on how to track the budget. And the second one is elimination of college prep from the curriculum, which will could could lead to a substantial increase in class size for all the new program. And it might be more difficult for students to replace up into higher level classes. It may be more difficult for them and require more of the teachers' time to assist the stu- these students, and which may detract from the education of the strong college prep students now that they'll both be in the same class. Obviously, there's also cuts to middle and elementary schools that will also ultimately have a negative impact on the high school, as well as elimination of funding for computer for computer technology such as referring servers, routers that break down. We note that the projected school budget shortfall is relatively small, about one and a half million dollars compared to the total temp predicted, the projected total town revenue of ninety-two and a half million dollars. So we would like to pose two questions to the board this evening. Are there options that can be taken to address the fiscal 2018 budget and immediate challenge to close the one point, one and a half or one point eight million dollar school budget gap? And then on the longer term, we were wondering what steps could be taken to develop a more perfect solution to to address what appear to be repeated shortfalls in the school budget. And then in summary, as budget parents will, we will continue to work with the superintendent and the school committee to help see that our education dollars continue to be used as efficiently as possible. And finally, we find that almost universally, other residents that we know say that the quality of the Reading school system was a driving factor to move to town. And we all know a number of families now who are dissatisfied with the school system and have decided to send their children to private schools. We're deeply concerned in the near future that the effect of these budget cuts will cause, be a cause for more families to make the same decision. We're asking the town leadership to make it a priority to find a permanent, long-term solution to these consistent budget challenges. So, and I'll email you all an official copy of this from the three budget. Thank you.
Well, it's very timely, Cam. Thank you very much. This budget is the focus of our weekend this night, so.
That's why we rushed it.
Comments are welcome.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Tomorrow.
Okay, so we're right in the book. We're going right into the budget.
Oh, yes.
Is there a form of the trust fund commissioners here?
Okay, you coming to order?
Yes.
Okay. So the trust fund commission is in business for tonight in the form. You got any money? Maybe we can solve the economy. Andy, you got him in the back there, talk to him. The other guys will all be mine. Well, as I mentioned, budget overview is what this is all about. And I think Bob, would you like to pick it up?
Please. The next three nights, the town department heads will take turns going over the impact of the FY18 budget on their department. I'm starting with a brief overview, maybe ten minutes of a presentation tonight. I'll be followed tonight by administrative services director Matt Pernellis. And following that, following Matt will be Sharon Angstrom, town accountant, to talk about the finance department. I'll come in and talk a little about benefits and miscellaneous costs. Joe Huggins, the facilities director, will talk about facilities. And I'll finish up tonight with a brief overview of debt and capital. Tomorrow night, we'll start out the evening with a badge pinning from the police department, and then police and dispatch budgets will be reviewed by Chief Sedala. After that, Chief Burns will review fire and emergency management services. And finally, assistant town manager Gene Delios will review public services. On Thursday, the library trustees and Amy Lannan, library director, will review the libraries budget. Jeff Sager will review the public works budget, and I'll finish up with a discussion of the enterprise funds. We may also have some concluding discussion, there's time for that on Thursday. But just to be clear, on January 24th, which is the next scheduled selectmen's meeting, there is time on the agenda at the end of the evening for an hour or two if the board wishes to have a wrap-up discussion. You're going to hear a lot in the next three days in a short period of time. We did it this way on purpose because we knew this was going to be a difficult budget year. Honestly, if you're hearing things tonight that cause you to need to schedule another January meeting, that's one of the reasons we did it this week. I appreciate the fact that the board is meeting for four consecutive nights. It's sort of has to break some kind of a record in revenue. And I want to start off my remarks by saying that for the first time in three years, our official org chart is unchanged from last year. So that's a nice story. And I wasn't sure if the community here or at home would be different than it typically is for budget meetings where this is a tough year. So I thought I'd take a step back and just do a little bit more of an overview than I normally would. And just make it very clear that the three beige boxes you see up there are three elected boards. If you will, they're each sovereign nations. They talk to each other, they work together, but they have very distinct and unique responsibilities that is only theirs. The selectmen in the last couple of years, I'll give them credit, have given the town manager many unachievable goals, but one set of goals that was achievable was to work very closely with the school department and specifically on four areas in a collaborative manner. Because the selectmen all believed that until we could say that our host was in order and we were efficient, the selectmen were not willing to ask the taxpayers for an override. So that work wrapped up last summer. And specifically, we worked on technology, HR, facilities, and finance. Schools have made really good progress in all those areas. Our collaboration ranges from sharing an employee in HR to sharing resources and knowledge and technology especially. And, you know, I can report that the school department's sort of internal organization in those four areas is very strong right now. It's very good. Also, as a matter of an overview, those that were involved in the summer listening sessions have seen this, but I'm going to do a quick picture of how Reading looks compared to peer communities. We had two independent consulting firms in 2008, and then in 2013, statistically analyzed Massachusetts communities. The first thing they both agreed to was throw out the former government of the city run by a mayor. I hope Rob Dolan's not listening, but mayors are always very inefficient, except for men and women. So that was the first rule. And you can see, and it's not important that you know all the names of the towns, but you can see geographically, a lot of the peers are around us. These are towns that statistically look similar to Reading. Parenthetically, I was up in the northwest corner of the peer communities this morning. I spent the morning in Westford, it was really interesting. You know, to the naked eye, Westford looks very different than Reading, but there are actually a lot of similarities that I learned while I was up there. And the reason, though, those peer communities are important is we compare ourselves, not necessarily to individually each one, but to the aggregation of all of them. And as we discussed last summer, I'll just give two quick slides on revenues and expenses. Peer communities, on average, have, they spend more of their budget from the tax levy than Reading does. That by itself does not mean taxes in Reading are high or low, but it just says that peers tend to rely more on the tax levy. Inside the tax levy, it's certainly very instructive to see that we each gather about fifty-four million dollars from residential property taxes, but then on average, our peer communities collect twelve million dollars more from the commercial, industrial, personal property sector. That was a discussion that's been in front of the board for the last two years, and frankly, one of the driving factors in the board agreeing a year ago to look for an economic development director, who we hired about three or four weeks ago, from funds that are one-time funds, and hired him for three years telling him that he needs to fish or cut bait, so he needs to increase property taxes to pay himself. And he's good with that. It's almost like being on commission. The areas that Reading has to rely on, since property taxes is not it, is state aid, and that's largely driven by the amount of students we have in chapter seventy funding, even though our chapter seventy funding is at a minimum. And then local receipts, part of that being the dividend from the light department. In terms of how we spend our money, looking at it really quickly, doesn't seem like much of a difference up there. You know, plus or minus one percent, not really statistically a big deal. Let me hit a couple of highlights. Under public safety, the way we do our accounting is not identical to all other communities. Our ambulance billing takes in about eight hundred thousand, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. That revenue is then shared with the school department. Not every town does it that way. Some public safety units keep all that revenue. So that largely explains the increase above, you know, a flat public safety spending. At the bottom of the list, town hall, general government, we are a little bit low. We are spread a little bit thin at town hall. And as what happened during the listening sessions in the summer, probably the most interesting number on the page is education. We spend a little bit more, on average, as a percent of our funds available, on education than our peers do. That is absolutely consistent with the fact that the per pupil spending is low because we have substantially more students than an average peer community does. So we spend more than average, but we have a lot more students. The benchmark to me is always Stonem, where we have doubled the amount of students for a very similar sized town. And students are the largest, certainly educational cost is the largest portion of anyone's budget. So is it a revenue problem? Well, hard to say. You know, we do have lower tax levy. Is it a spending problem? None of these areas are certainly out of control.
Can I back up for a second?
Sure.
So interestingly, the average peer has eleven million dollars more to work with than you.
Yes.
And that's very telling. I mean, you know, to the public comment, you know, we come up a little bit short, but compared to our peers, we're absent eleven million dollars.
Yeah, and I didn't bring the chart, but we used it a lot last summer showing, you know, the average single-family tax bill. And much to some people's surprise, the average single-family tax bill in Reading is below average of our peers. It was anywhere from five to eight hundred dollars, depending on how you measured it, below average. And, you know, I'm a taxpayer too, it doesn't always feel that way, but that's what the facts were. You know, a real simple example is North Reading. Their property taxes on average are, I think, twelve hundred dollars higher than Reading. People are really surprised to hear that. A lot of that is their new school. Not all of it, though. Again, you know, taxes in Reading, by any measure I could come up with, are not high or not above average.
But on that, that statistic that you showed, I think that measured not just what our taxes were relative to other communities, but also one of the indices was per capita income.
Yes.
So obviously, if you're in Lexington, you're, you know, your taxes are higher. But in terms of per capita income, towns that have sort of our same per capita income are paying low, so.
If you, if you did a regression of per capita income and tax bills, we were still below that regression line.
Yeah, we were, I think it was three or four hundred dollars.
At least, yeah. Yep. And by all means, anyone in the audience of the board should feel free to, I won't even say interrupt, but discuss all the time during this.
Bob, I want to go back to that slide on the subject of public, the ambulance. This is describing, that slide there, we're just spending nine point two percent on public safety. How does that square with the increased revenues from, we're taking, we've got an ambulance service, we're charging for that. You said earlier that contributes to the half percent. I'm not.
The nine point two percent is just above ten million dollars.
Right.
So if you were to take ambulance fees and net them against the cost, you'd chop a percent off. Does that answer your question?
Which would make us below the average in peer communities than above the average.
If that's the case, yeah. As many of you know, we had a lot of listening sessions last summer, and we culminated that with a special election in October. And what you're seeing last night from the schools and tonight in front of the selectmen are budgets that we described last summer, quite honestly. Actually, they're a little bit better, because last summer, we described future budgets as if no free cash were available, and we mentioned a three million dollar structural deficit. I know the schools mentioned thirty-five FTEs, and the town mentioned ten to twelve FTEs as possible reductions under that scenario. As it turns out, our free cash regeneration was pretty good last fall, so the finance committee in October, November voted to allow one point two million of free cash, so that the actual budgets in FY18 are not as difficult as we had imagined last summer, even though they're difficult. There's been three changes since the financial forum that was held in the fall. They are all reductions in accommodated costs. And I'll just go over them quickly. The schools found some ways to save out of district special education. We thought that was appropriate, that they moved some funding into their operating budget since they spent some money in order to save that money. So if you will, they're getting a two hundred thousand dollar increase in their operating budget. The town had some savings in the fuel account. We didn't need all the budget that was allocated, and we actually decided to move that fifty thousand instead of the parts of the town budget into the capital budget, which I'll explain later. And very recently, I uncovered the pension funding was about a hundred thousand dollars too high. And so we decided, we being mostly the town accountant and myself, that the best solution, and the superintendent agreed, was to just use less free cash to balance the budget since we had already produced budgets.
Bob, how can, how can that, we're sort of behind the curve on pensions, so how do we find a hundred thousand dollars more?
Yeah, that's, it's up to the retirement board. They did a one-time change in the current year. It was only a one point six percent increase. I had been budgeting for a four and a half percent increase, which is what they said we should do. And it had to do with how they count where staff is, whether the staff's in the general fund or the enterprise fund. I can't say that I fully either understood or agreed with what they did, but they are the boss. So, you know.
Does that mean our pension liability goes down, or does it just means that we don't have to put in as much in any given year?
It means our pension liability goes down if what they did was correct forever, because they're counting less of a liability, more in the enterprise funds, less in the general fund. But as I understand it, they do a snapshot, which is all you do when you're an actuary, I suppose. And just to round out the discussion, because I know this question's come up to me at least, there's been some discussion about we can fee our way out of this problem. As we discussed last summer, that's absolutely not true. There are some fees on the town side, there's one especially large one, a trash fee. But as we discussed last summer, we were not going to, if you will, threaten the community with a fee increase if they did not pass an override, that we would honor the will of the voter and reduce budgets if an override did not pass. But the selectmen mentioned they would reserve the right to look at fees as they do every couple of years anyways, to perhaps help future budgets. And just to lay it on the table, except for that one large fee, there is no single fee that you'll find that'll even put a dent in the financial problem that the town has. I'll leave further discussion to each department head. Some of them, especially in public services, Gene will talk some about the fees. And, you know, when we talk about going from thirty dollars to fifty dollars on a fee that we assess twenty times a year, you get the idea of how much value there is really looking at fees. Not to say we shouldn't do them, but you won't fee yourself out of the problem.
Well, is it safe to say that, you know, and I do think that we have to look at everything that's in front of us, you know? Every way that the town brings a dollar of revenue in, or sends a dollar of expense out, I think we have to look hard at that. In the fee area, and that's come up, I mean, we've heard from a lot of citizens to examine that, and I do think we have to.
Yeah.
Is it fairly safe to say that when you look at fees, you really have to look at fees more in a projected way than a current way? So in other words, because of the timing of the fiscal year and so forth?
There are some, yeah, there are some fees. For instance, you know, for a couple of years over the prior board, we talked about separating the train depot sticker from the trash, I mean, from the compo sticker. It's twenty-five dollars to do both, it's the best deal in town. The board can still do that, but we've already started selling stickers for this year as combined at twenty-five dollars. I think it would be really in bad faith to change that, honestly, until next January. And that's a discussion the board has every fall, is, you know, you've pretty much got to decide by October, because otherwise you're changing the whole program. And how come the police enforce something if you have all these different sets of stickers you try to enforce? So that's one possibility. And as you know, you'll hear from the chief, there's not a whole lot of money in that to begin with, but that's a different discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Otherwise, I think it's fine to have a fee discussion, you know, that would be in the near term, but again, you'll see the impacts are not high. Building permit fees, you could raise them anytime.
So we'd be sure we earmarked part of that time on the 24th to talk about not only fees, the idea of going back for the lower dollar amount override. I want that discussed by the board.
And as a final thought on fees, it's just important that the community understand that town is not allowed to charge a fee just because someone would pay. By law, must charge a fee that's commensurate with what it costs to offer service. So if we offered square dancing at the senior center and people would pay ten thousand dollars for it, we can't charge that because there's no way you can justify that as a cost. So in the background, sometimes that's a hidden discussion, because, you know, you think, well, you know, this is my alternative, I would gladly pay that. The town has to be able to justify through some accounting method that the town accountant will scrutinize, yes, we can charge that fee because it cost us that. We can't make a profit on a fee.
Well, it seems that that's designed around the idea that, you know, citizens vote their, you know, the tax revenue flows, you know, prescribed way by law. The only change to that tax revenue is by vote, by override or by debt exclusion. And so it seems to me that that probably connects the dots on if you don't get a tax increase.
Right.
You can't really create a tax increase by arbitrarily picking a number for a fee. Is that, is that fair to say?
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, but I think some of the fees that have been sort of discussed publicly and here are standard fees for service that other towns charge that, you know, are easily justifiable by just even looking at some of our peer communities. If you look at the parking, parking, for example, if you happen to live in North Reading, and you drive to the Reading depot to take the train into Boston, you're paying four dollars a day at the MBTA lot. That's a thousand dollars a year. So, you know, I'm not saying we're going to charge two thousand dollars a year, but certainly a discussion that charges somewhere south of that, but more, but north of twenty-five, to me seems, you know, justified.
I do think we have to have that discussion, Barry. I think that, you know, we need to earmark plenty of time on the 24th to turn all the rocks over in that regard. And, you know, and I'm not suggesting you shouldn't do fees because it's somehow a mask for taxes, because I, I don't really believe that. I think that, I think we have to, and the law prescribes this, we need to look at how we can charge fees that actually match up to, you know, what a cost would normally be. I mean, and I, I think that's true. I know there was some examination of that in some of the fees that the school department was letting as well. That, you know, the law is pretty clear. You know, you need to, you can charge fees that match costs, and then you take the fees in and you spend them on costs. I mean, it's, you know, and I think it's notable that when the town takes in a fee, we take a hun- I, correct me if I'm wrong about this, Bob, but I think when we take in a fee on the town side of the accounting, we take a hundred percent of that fee and bring it into our general revenue account. And then when that's redistributed, the way that we've been cooperating with the schools and the school committee is that even though that would be a town fee, a hundred percent of it would come into the revenue stream, and sixty-six percent of it would go to the school, and thirty-three percent of it would be retained. Do I have that right?
That's accurate.
I mean, roughly, I know.
It's correct as a philosophy, there's been very few exceptions. One year, the board voted to raise ambulance fees in order to help fire department to a specific reason. But yes, generally, that philosophy is exactly right.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Three questions. So on that same topic, that is not always the case on the school side, though, right? For example, athletic fees remain within the.
I think it's generally never the policy on the school side.
Okay. The second point is, the nice aspect of fees that I find is that the burden falls upon those that use the service. That is, it's a user tax, if you will. And that way, it's driven by those that benefit, if you will, from parking or trash pickup or whatever it is. So the one aspect of that that is attractive is while there's a cost, it's levied on those that get the benefit of that cost. The other part of the discussion on the 24th, I think, has to also be the cost of that revenue. These proposed changes don't come free. You've got to tabulate, you've got to measure, somebody's going to track, chase down the exception, so there's a cost of cash that goes along.
Yeah, it's not just as simple as fee in, and suddenly that paints itself to a bottom-line number. Of course, it doesn't, it definitely doesn't.
No, there are certainly, there are certainly things that you can do to look at that from a cost standpoint, because that's obviously one of the biggest things. And it's great that you take in this X amount of dollars, but there's a cost to that X amount of dollars to take.
Well, you have to understand what the.
There's definitely ways to look at that, though, I think, from a, you know, that aren't as, you know, apples to apples, so to speak, when it comes to those dollars.
Mark, you had a.
To John. Mark Doxer from Crease One and Sherwood Klein, I think this is actually a very important area, and I appreciate the opportunity to talk about it in one of the meetings. But there are a lot of fees at this point that aren't necessarily at the appropriate level, necessarily covering costs. I'm not sure I completely agree with this, not just what the market will pay. I understand the restrictions as.
Would you repeat that last sentence? I didn't hear that.
The statement here, the last statement on the board, fees must be justified, cost of service is not just what the market will pay. I think Barry brought it up also, that there's an opportunity cost. If other communities are charging certain things, there's a market rate for.
Doesn't matter, ambulance, doesn't matter. That's state law.
So that, that would argue then, for parking, we can't ever have.
We need to justify whatever fee we want to charge for parking. The MBTA does not need to justify their four dollars under the same rules. But if North Reading had a station and they were going to charge four, they would have to justify that.
Right. I think, I guess my point is this, I think that there is justification that can take place. I think this is an important area for us to look at. It's been kind of a, perhaps a little bit of a give back in some cases to the residents. I think it's important that we take a look at it.
Well, it needs to be identified, isolated, and then understood. You know, the cost of, to John's point, there's a cost to the fee.
Nothing's for free.
Yeah, so you've got to really, and I think that, you know, the sense I have from what a selectman is, no stone goes unturned here. And that, you know, we really need to get into, I mean, at the end of the day, there's arithmetic going on. But it's not, it isn't rocket science, but it does require that you really peel the layers back or be able to understand it.
And I think that this, this time more so than the times in the past for gaps, the tens of the twenties, the fifties, and the hundreds, it's like the other.
And I think, you know, to your point, Mark, you know, it'd be an interesting look to look at things, okay, if the state's telling us that it's not just what the market will pay, it's things in regards to cost, you know, what does it cost for a parking space for the town to keep that parking space?
Now, that's one way to kind of look at it from a monetary standpoint, say, it costs us X because we want to keep it at the highest level, so therefore, we're going to charge Y for it. So there's probably ways we can really look at this.
When you're doing this kind of budgeting, Kevin, I agree that you do have to really tear it down and understand.
Yeah.
You know, and there's, I'm hopeful, I'm guessing that we will here, since we're doing such thorough examination, I mean, there's a certain cost to what we're doing right now. I mean, the cost of nighttime government, for example.
Is high.
Is not free. And so these are things that we've always assumed were just a cost of doing business. And they are a cost of doing business. But, you know, as we, as you look at, as you look at how money gets spent, these are, this is one of the things we have to look at as well. So to turn the lights on in this building, to have the staff that needs to be compensated one way or the other for their time in nighttime government, I mean, well, you know, the selectmen volunteer their time, the conscom volunteers. volunteer their time, the conscom volunteers its time, the board health volunteers its time, all true, but there's some, there's some soft costs involved, and, you know, there's a pretty big pile of soft costs sitting in the room right now.
Nighttime government is not free.
And we do need to, I think, as part of the analysis, we really need to understand how we spend the money, because we owe that to, you know, to the people that write the checks, which are, which are the citizens.
I'd just like to make a quick comment on the fees must be justified by thorough analysis of the cost of services. I think that you ask, you could ask, maybe this is an overreach, but you could ask ten different accountants to justify the cost, and they'll come up with ten different ways to justify it. So, for example, say, for parking fees, or you could, you could include the cost to maintain the roads, and as part of that cost.
Andy, I don't disagree, and I think all of that needs to be, I mean, I don't think that if you're going to increase a fee, you want to necessarily make it the smallest possible fee, you want to make it a fair fee.
Right.
That actually encompasses all of the potential costs involved in how you arrive at that number, so, you know, the one thing you can't do is just look to market forces because we're not that kind of a business.
Yeah. So. So, here's the draft town manager's budget in front of the selectmen, and again, for the folks at home, schools in the town are a little bit different in the sense that formally, the superintendent creates a budget, but then it goes to the school committee. The school committee then votes a budget, they approve a budget with or without changes that goes to the town manager. On the town side, the selectmen are advisory to the town manager, but ultimately, it's the town manager's budget, and I do listen to you, trust me. But just so people understand, it's not parallel, exactly equal processes, and at the end of the day, it's the town manager's responsibility under the charter, regardless of what the school committee, the selectmen, or the superintendent have said to balance the budget. So, that's why we involve the finance committee early in, in the fall and understand what our available revenues are and have a target of spending. And much like the school department, you know, the town is looking at a 1.4% increase next year. That's what available revenue is allowed. And at this point, I have to thank the school committee and the school department for donating the facilities department to us, because for the second year in a row, they're the most expensive department, between four and a half and five percent cost next year, but as Joe will describe, they're, they're good costs. In terms of staffing reductions, as we discussed last summer, the town is a little more expense-heavy than the schools, certainly, they're more personnel-heavy, so it hits us a little less on the staffing, but there's seven and a half FTE equivalents in that list, and I won't read the list, but we had to eliminate three hundred thousand dollars' worth of cuts. And then, in some cases, we had to put some of it back. So, for instance, when we eliminate a firefighter or a police officer, it's only logical, unfortunately, that we have to add some overtime back in, because we know there'll be some cost, even though we can't predict exactly what it'll be. So, the net, you know, the net of the seven and a half FTE reduction is about two hundred and eighty thousand dollars, and each department head will go into quite a lot of detail on that.
A question on that last one?
Yeah.
Why the ratio, disparity ratio between the overtime for police and fire? Looks like it's five to one for police, a little over three to one.
Where are you looking, Dan?
I'm dividing sixty-five thousand by twenty thousand.
Oh, okay. I guess the shortest and simplest answer is minimum manning on fire. When you, when you lose a firefighter hour for any reason of time, off is a much higher probability you will, by contract, need to replace it.
You need to.
I thought it was important, especially as the town manager, to talk about the management team. No return, we're saving a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars by changes to the management team. That's through two, two basic changes. One is we're eliminating one position, and the other is some employee turnover in a couple of key areas where we saved money for the first year. But, you know, this is not something that I've ever really discussed with the selectmen or public. I think it's really important to bring it up now. Reading has only eight department heads on the town side, which is very low compared to peer communities. That's not something I have stats on, but I can tell you from talking to other town managers, fifteen to twenty is much more typical for department heads. In addition, not every town, certainly, but some of our peers are much more deeply staffed. In Reading, the department heads are scarce, and they have to do actual real work, so that a cost of this management team is a significant one. And, and I laugh sometimes, and the selectmen will appreciate this, when someone will ask me, how much of your time is spent on management? And my answer to that is, as little as possible, because I have real work to do. And every department head could say the same thing. There's actual work that department heads must do no one else can do, and that's just a fact. That is not true in many other communities. They are superpowers, they are managers, that's what we do. We have to do that as well. So, I thought it was important to just show that we are also taking a look at the management, if you will, and making changes as best we can.
Bob, I have a question on that. I remember when, when you first became town manager, one of the things, you looked at the org chart, and one of the things that you prioritized was trying to find redundancies within departments, because if somebody, especially more on the town side than on the school side, where someone's been in a job for twenty-five years, and that person decides to retire or go elsewhere, they take with them, you know, twenty-five years of institutional knowledge that no one else may have. And, and I remember when you reorganized it, you tried to find a way so that if something happened, there was someone else to kind of step up, and there would be kind of a, you know, dual control, so to speak. You know, the fact that we have eight department heads and you cut it a little bit more, are you sacrificing any of that?
Well, the one reduction was in the one single department that had two assistant department heads, the biggest one, Gene's department. So, now, we just have one. So, we still have that redundancy, it's not nearly as good as it was, quite honestly.
And that was through attrition?
Yes. And as Gene will tell you, people with lots of knowledge try to leave the organization, they may even formally retire, but they're never really allowed to totally leave.
Well, I just, yeah, just seeing in your, in your budget write-up, you have two retired folks doing work for us, so I guess in Reading, you never retire.
Um, no.
I guess we wouldn't too.
And, and again, I'm not going to go into a lot of detail, but you will hear over the next couple of nights, less hours of service to the public, quite simply. The library will describe the lost Sunday hours. This building will close two hundred and sixty hours weekly, not weekly, but over the year, but that'll be a big change.
That'd be a trip.
Particularly as, as the assistant town manager will review, there will be less than staff participation in community events, and I have to tell you quite honestly, some of the community events may not be held without staff involvement, we'll have to see. And as we mentioned, and as, again, Gene will go over it, sort of with statistics, you know, the involvement of staff in nighttime government is very high in Reading. Everyone in this room is here for free, but that's not true of other employees. Management does not get overtime, but other people get overtime or overtime.
Well, in regards to nighttime government, what, have you ever looked at the amount of, and I'm not saying it's bad, mother, woman, or the other, just curious, the amount of committees and boards we have, nighttime government's proposed to our peer communities?
I've done that, but not sort of mathematically. You know, what I, what I discovered in looking at websites, without going out to the town and talking to them, the websites can be very misleading, and I'll use an example that I think I found on Wakefield. Obviously, I can visit them, and I, and I do frequently. They list groups on their website as a committee of the town that are not formal committees of the town. They're a group of citizens that do something interesting, and they, so they list them as a resource, but they have no involvement with the selectmen or the employees, other than a group of interested residents. So, that's why it's a little hard to measure, because you can't just go on a website and look and figure it out.
Right.
I would say that in general, our volunteers, we have a high amount of volunteers, and they're very exuberant around.
Yeah.
And if you're looking for a fee to impose, I think volunteer fees would probably help balance the question. I said that once, and a certain committee was not appreciative.
Inverted wages.
Exactly.
A fee to serve.
Yeah, yeah.
I thought we had that.
It's called your time. Also, it's important, you'll see a budget in front of you, you'll see some specific changes, but what you don't see is, honestly, in the parlance of the schools, where level services are, and I've just thrown one example out there. You're going to see Chief Sagala talk about the elimination of one patrol officer. As we mentioned last summer, if an override passed, we would have added two officers, so there's a change of three. We also discussed that, you know, with the size of the override, which was large, that we asked for, we would be able to do things in the next three to five years frequently for other departments as needed, and we fully expected to be able to hire another officer every three to five years. I will tell you right now that my impression is we're somewhere between four and eight police officers understaffed in this community. We last did a staffing study almost fifteen years ago. The town was very different fifteen years ago, the world was very different fifteen years ago. We are not at the staffing levels recommended fifteen years ago, so just think about that in police. So, it's, it's really easy to look at a budget, look at the changes, and bemoan the changes. You know, something Dan mentioned to me a little while ago is to do a zero-based budgeting, and that just doesn't work in the public sector, but the philosophy of it is really important. If you were to start a town government, where would you start? And that's, that's a personal question that honestly, all of us here would have slightly different answers for, but I think it's fairly universal that police are, you know, an assumed cost, that you want to have some amount of, you know, of a police force. And, and the truth is, in Reading, we don't have, you know, heavy staffing, we just don't. And as you'll hear from all the other departments, many divisions within their departments are similar. We're doing the work of more people than we actually have, is the simple solution. And I'll just conclude by saying that I make the same comment every year, and I'll make it next year. As always, we will all strive to meet the expectations of the community with whatever level of resources that are made available, and that's by definition true. But as some of the department heads and most of the selectmen, and I certainly know, there'll be a lot of very satisfied residents, but the trend of unhappy residents is increasing, there's just no question, and that'll be true of both the school and town side as we eliminate services that they've come to grow used to. Reading has a lot of things in it that other towns don't have. I really don't want to pick on any of them, because that'll feel like I'm singling them out, but we have positions and we have services that communities around us do not have, and I've discussed those services with the department heads and with residents, and they all want to keep those services for as long as possible. This budget does that. This budget is difficult, but it does not completely eliminate services that are unique to Reading, I'd have to say. That day is not far away, though. That day has come. I've also had a lot of discussions, as you know, the board have with newcomers to town that are new to the town within five years or so, and a lot of them chose the town, the comparables are often Andover, Winchester, Redd, for whatever reason. And Reading was chosen because it's a high-value town. You get a lot of services for what it costs to buy a house and parenthetically what the property taxes are, which really wasn't the decision. That's an imbalance that cannot continue. Our, our low amount of property taxes cannot support the services that they thought they wanted as if it were Lexington. The average home in Lexington pays over twelve thousand, we're about seven thousand. We probably do a reasonably good job in value in bridging some of that gap, but we are not Lexington, we never will be, and that's just something that's going to become clearer this year and in future years, both in the school and the town budget, just as we said it would last summer. So, with that, I'd like to turn over balance of the night to the department heads, starting with Matt Cronellis, our administrative services director, right now.
Mr. Chairman, just a sec. Can I ask one more question of Bob before you leave the podium? So, I know in the last, over the last few years, we, we sort of looked at doing budgets, not kind of year by year, but sort of looking into the, into the future a little bit. So, as dire as this budget is in terms of cuts that are made both on our town side and the school side, assuming no other revenue sources, whether, you know, the, you know, fees or potentially a smaller override, what does nineteen look like in terms of, can you make any predictions in terms of what, what's going to be lost at least on the town side? Or, or at least in terms of how much less money we have to spend?
Dr. Doherty and I spent actually a fair amount of time over the last few months talking about FY nineteen of all things. If you recall, during the summer, both of us said, and the public seemed to understand and appreciate, that our number-one concern was employee morale. In order to deliver services the community wants, you have to have good employees, and so if you don't have good morale, you know, we saw a flight out of Reading a couple of years ago and had twenty or twenty-five vacancies at one point, people just nervous about the financial condition as an employee. So, I made it a priority, and I know John made it a priority, to try to minimize FY nineteen personnel reductions, so that we could both say to our staff, this year will be the most difficult year for personnel changes. So, if you made it through this year, your chances of making it through nineteen are much better. Now, nothing's perfect, and, you know, you never know what the future has, but as you've seen from my budget write-up, if my look at the future is accurate and we can cut our expenses as I think we can, we may not have to make very many layoffs at all in FY nineteen about this budget. I can't speak for, for John in that, in the school side, but that was a priority to be able to tell our staffs, after this, things are okay for a couple of years, and then maybe there's another crack, going back to the residents with an override. But we felt, we both had to take a two-year look at budgets for the first time, really, in a while, and that's assuming we have one and a quarter percent this year, that assumes one and a half to two percent next year, which is probably realistic.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me just say before you get going, Matt, if anybody has a question or a comment, in order, this is not the normal setup for RCTV and for everybody to be able to hear, so if you have a question or a comment for any of the speakers, I'm going to ask that you please stand up, because the sound system works better, the question can be acknowledged better. Okay?
Okay. Thank you. My name's Matt Cronellis, I'm the director of administrative services, and before you tonight is the administrative services budget. Just by way of background, there are actually five divisions in administrative services, operations, town manager's office, human resources, technology, and the town clerk, which also consists of elections. Overall, I consider my budget to be level funded. We actually have a decrease in wages and a small increase in expenses, and so I thought the best way to do it was to just sort of walk you through the minutes sheet, so you can, I can highlight a few things, and if there's any questions afterwards, you can ask about that. So, we start with operations, and the operations division consists of procurement, communications, constituent services, also shared staff, and we have postage and equipment maintenance in that, in that department as well, centralized division. And the, the first main cut I want to highlight is to the operations specialist position, and that's what we were actually talking about before, where it's actually staffed by two former Reading employees, now retired, and the former HR director and the former town accountant, so they're just working part-time on special projects. So, we're proposing to cut that from forty thousand to twenty thousand. What that will do is, it'll mean canceling certain technology integration projects that we were going to be working on, but we will, we will be able to preserve some other projects by keeping the line funded, so we didn't zero out the line. But even with that, that cut, that would be a reduction of one-half of an FTE right there. As we move down, still in operations. This is on here.
Pay-in-class.
Yep. Pay-in-class. Yep. Pay-in-class is the, is the next one I wanted to talk about. That's a twenty-three thousand dollar cut. What that would mean is that there would be no pay-in-class increases in FY eighteen at all. We would consider that to be half of an FTE as well, and we did have that money left over, but we thought it best to, to cut that, given the financial situation. It's not the best cut to make, because employees do count on that money every year, and it could have an effect on morale, and it could also have an effect on where we stand with our peer communities, but that was a cut we had to make. We're making a small cut also to the temporary help that we use. That's mostly high school students that we use in the summer and a few hours during the week, so we're making a fifteen percent cut to that as well. The next, the next department is actually the town manager's office. Let's put it up here, so you can see. Town manager's office consists of the selectmen, finance committee, legal services, and property insurance, and the highlight there is actually, there's going to be a small increase, or twenty thousand dollar increase, in the legal services budget for town council. We made that increase because that's the way the line seemed to be trending this year with legal services. It's also a very valuable service to have, I say that being an attorney myself, but, you know, to give the little plug there, but it's also something we use a lot, and it's something that every department depends on, so that, that line item needs to come up. As we move to human resources, which would be the next department, division that I'd As we move to Human Resources, which would be the next department, division that I'd want to talk about. If I can get it up there, Human Resources. So Human Resources provides support to the towns, the school department, the light department, and retirees. So it's much more than just the town, we actually deal with four different units there. Our Human Resources Director Judy Perkins is here tonight, sitting out in the crowd, she's also my assistant department head. The only real change we're going to make there, we're going to ask to make there is a cut to the HR professional services. That cut would be basically because we're not anticipating as many assessment centers this year and that's where that was paid out under the assessment center line item. So we used it a lot last year with some police and fire vacancies, including chief and deputy chief in both places and also some promotions.
Matt, a quick go back on the Law Labor Council line?
Sure, yep.
So you've got that budgeted at twenty-five K this year and proposed to leave it fly. But the run rate the past couple actuels has been well below that.
On the twenty-five K? Well, this year we're going into the union negotiations, so that's where Labor Council.
Very good, sorry, that answers the question.
They're also planning to review all the contracts?
Yes. Contract review and negotiation, so we're going to need that more. Yeah, you're right, during the usual year, we don't use it as much.
So while we're there.
Right.
TLT litigation, you're not forecasting anything. And I am certain that we haven't seen the last of the bills. Don't those end up at the Town Council?
Yeah, I would expect, we have not been billed since June for the schools council, we have been billed by the towns council. The town is current through, I think it's November, schools through last June. No question, we will be going to April Town Meeting with a request for TLT litigation funding, which I know I mentioned at the TLT special town meeting. You can see there's a small amount there year-to-date, what is it, eight, six grand or eight grand? I can't really remember.
We're not forecasting anything because...
But it should be wrapped up this year. Whatever money is owed needs to be told to us by April Town Meeting or too bad. You know, the service was rendered this year, it needs to be paid this year.
And so that'll find its way not through the budget, but through a special request?
Yes, at April Town Meeting, under the FY seventeen budget article, I'm sure we'll be asking for funding.
Because I'm certain there's a large amount.
I'm certain it's large also.
There's a large amount of litigation fees.
Can I ask one more question?
Yeah.
On the legal council line, so just to be clear, the Town Council's TLT expenses are not in that line, right? They're separated?
They are in the Town Council line.
They are in that line, okay.
We account for it and we know what it is.
Okay, but it's in that line?
We decided it should still be part of Town Council.
And with all the zoning you've been doing, all those expenses are in the Town Council line also. So my question is, are we really trending toward one-eighty or are we going to have less TLT, less zoning? Does one, do we need to bump to one-eighty?
No, we don't seem to be having any less zoning.
More zoning.
More zoning. Frankly, that's a function also, I mean, you know, CPDC last night, you know, was marching towards some recommendations that are really surrounding economic development. Economic development theoretically spawns additional revenue, hence, you know, you don't want that to slow down. I mean, you really, actually, if that exceeded budget, in a longer-term look, it's probably a good thing, actually.
This is revenue we're spending, it's not cost.
I mean, this is one of those variable expenses that...
Yep.
I mean, you kind of, I know this is going to sound odd, but fixed expenses you want to maintain and manage, variable expenses, you know, note that they're running next to revenue and therefore you want them to run, you know, not necessarily stagnate.
Mark, I don't know, I don't believe I've ever shared with the Finance Committee the analysis of legal services, but I'll do that at your next meeting. The Selectmen see it every couple of months, there's a lot of categories, there's projections on rates of spend, so you can have a look.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next division that we have under administrative services is technology. So as you can imagine, that's centralized computer services, telecommunications, internet, audio/video, software, computer support, mapping. In technology, we're actually asking for some increases to expenses this year that are needed. The first increase would be for the line item, forty thousand dollar increase to upgrade our Microsoft sixteen software. Right now we're running Microsoft Office ten and it's causing some compatibility issues and it won't be long before we really have a problem there. So the technology director has asked us to actually purchase the next version of Office. Further down, we also are asking for a one-time thirty thousand dollar expense to acquire several rugged field tablets for the DPW. That would increase productivity in the field as they would be connected, as they're all working. So DPW has asked for that and we've included that, you know, technology obviously services all departments. So that was that request there. And the technology director is asking for a one-time ten thousand dollar expense to upgrade our firewall, which is in need of upgrading and is also, as you can imagine, very important, we wouldn't want to let that pass.
The Russians are the bad ones.
I didn't say.
North Redding.
North Redding.
They'll be in for the Russians.
As we move to the Town Clerk's budget in elections. So the Town Clerk's office covers elections, voter registration, census, town meeting, licenses, historic documents, document storage. The changes in the Town Clerk's budget, we are asking for a small increase in an expense of fifteen thousand dollars to continue our electronic archiving that we've started and has been a very useful tool for us to preserve a lot of our historic and legal documents, so we're asking to continue that. And we're making a major cut to election workers and that is, it's really because there's fewer elections coming up in FY eighteen, but it's a fifty thousand dollar reduction in election workers and we do consider that to be a reduction of one-point-five FTEs. So the Clerk's office goes with the changes to that budget. A couple of side notes, a couple of things that you don't see in this budget, things that I would like and have asked for in the past. One thing would be the Town Clerk's office currently shares an admin with the Finance Department and it had been in the look ahead to have an admin, full-time admin in the Clerk's office exclusively. That couldn't be funded last year, it can't be funded this year, but in talking to the clerk, it would help with customer service and getting through backlogs. And also one position we didn't fill again this year, although we would have liked to, is a software coordinator. That would, right now we divide up the software responsibilities between a technology and administrative assistants, but this person would actually centralize it, it would centralize training, integrate a lot of our systems together. We can't afford that this year either, but that would be another thing that would be needed. And actually, the real last thing is the Laserfish software we use to put all our documents in electronic form and have on the website and available in public records. That's in need of an eighty thousand dollar increase at some point, but it's not going to be funded this year. We can still use the existing system, but the Town Clerk has reminded me that in the future, this is something we're going to have to, we're going to have to deal with, so. So that is basically my budget in a nutshell. If you have any other further questions, I can answer them or we can move on to finance.
On the elections. You know, this year with the federal election, we had the first time we had a roll of the voting.
Yes.
So, and I know for two weeks you had people at Town Hall, you had to feed them, you had to, you know, pay them.
Yep.
What's the, how much did we get from the state for that? And I'm assuming it wasn't nearly the cost of what it cost and what was the shortfall?
Yeah.
Do we anticipate, I know it's only on federal elections that we do that, so is that every, would that include just the presidential? Was that Senate bases or?
Well, I think it's every, it could be actually, they're talking about changing it to even more frequency, but every, I think definitely every presidential election and I have to check on whether it's the federal election as well.
I think it's just every four years now, but there's clearly a discussion, it was so successful.
Yeah, they're talking about it, so it's hard to tell right now, but right now you can count on the presidential election.
So what was the difference between what it cost and what we got back from the state?
I think Laura said three or four thousand dollars, it's not a huge number.
Yeah.
And for the convenience, I'd say it was pretty worthwhile.
Forty-two hundred?
That's what it sounded like.
It probably cost us a lot more. And it is, Matt.
I did have to buy pizza for everyone at mine one night.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just a question about the software upgrades, I know it's not a huge part of the budget, but a lot of these, like Muna, Microsoft ten, a lot of these software applications now are available online freeware and function very well and you don't have to pay for them, you just download them.
We do purchase licenses.
I wondered if you would consider that.
Yeah, I mean, we do purchase licenses and we, yeah, and we have to do things, you know, by the book, you know, especially where we're a municipality. So with that option may be available to other people, not necessarily available to us. What we're talking about is Microsoft Office, you know, the latest version would be sixteen. There's actual version thirteen that we never upgraded to, so it was still working off ten. But, I mean, we could look into other ways to do it, but generally this is the way we prefer to split it.
If I can add to that, in discussions with the school department primarily and to some smaller degree with the library, the school department particularly can get deals that the town does not, is not eligible for. So generally speaking, I'd say the schools pay ten cents on the dollar of what the town has to pay for the same thing on the software because there's educational discounts. However, the penalty for us using anything bought with an educational discount on the town side are severe. So we have to be really careful.
Yeah.
And we also have to be really careful, as Matt said, making sure we're always licensed. We're a big enough organization that software companies will come after us if we don't behave. But as myself as a resident, they're never going to care.
No, I'm not talking pirated software.
I just know that there's open source software out there that does, performs very well.
It does, but the feature set never matches the completeness of the Microsoft Office set, from my experience. It never does, feature for feature.
You can find the features. Yeah, it's improved a lot.
Matt, can you, back on operations division, business admin?
Yes.
So this like took a bounce two years ago, is that because maybe a person left and wasn't replaced at one? I'm looking at Ops, business admin.
Yeah.
Sixty-seven, seventy-four, then forty-three, and then eighty. Is that, did we not have a person for a while?
Right, I guess it was vacant, part of this predates me here. It's currently filled, it's the business administrator. At one point that was somebody that had actually worked out at the police department doing some of the same functions. But now we have somebody there full-time and that would explain why.
So that's a bump.
Yeah, it was vacant, yeah, exactly. Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Twenty, twenty to twenty-two. Boy, that's small.
Where are you going, twenty?
Twenty to twenty-two. So this is the finance budget and if you go to, it's twenty to twenty-two in your packet. If you go to the end, you'll see the overall increase in finance is one-point-eight percent. And the main driver for that increase is basically salary increases. They're on the non-union staff in the finance department, there's twelve-point-three, I think, FTEs in the finance department and they all qualify for the recommended step and cola increase that Bob had recommended, which is one step, two percent, and point-seven-five percent cola. All the other items seem to stay, we have them flat, we're not increasing. But there is a couple of small increases here in the professional development area for like a hundred dollars and that's the area where I would draw from and I will be renewing my CPA license next year, so that will be very helpful. But that's basically the only increase with the exception of, in the assessors department, this three-point-one percent increase. That is actually our regional assessor, he is actually an employee of Wakefield and we have an agreement with them and that increase is based on that contract. Everything else within the department is flat in terms of expenses. The only increases we have are the salary increases in that regional assessor. And we do not have any staff reductions in finance and there's a few reasons for that. First off, we are a shared service department, so we do the finance for the entire town, including RMLD. So there's a lot of volume to what we do, but we also charge indirect costs back to those enterprise funds for our salaries and our expenses. So a portion of what is paid out of finance is actually charged back to enterprise funds. So if you were to cut a person in finance, you're not going to get the savings that you would think because money is coming in from other departments to help from it. The other key area is the volume of what we do and the nature of what we do and that is not going away, it's very consistent volume. So for instance, we do the payroll for the entire town, including RMLD and that's a bi-weekly payroll, on average it's about twelve hundred employees that are being paid. We collect all of the cash from the town, either indirectly or directly. So most of the payments are collected directly by the collector's office and process people being posted. And in some cases, we are collecting turnovers from departments for their fees, but then they still have to be verified, approved, and posted. So I think last year we had a hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand cash receipts that we process through our office. We pay all of the AP invoices for all of the departments, including RMLD, and that was twenty-nine thousand pesos.
So just as a point of curiosity, it sounds like your department, if anything, picks up in intensive times like this.
Oh, yeah, I mean, in fiscal eighteen, we have the senior tax relief program that was in place. We did not add any additional staffing moves or...
Well, so that is really where I was driving, so I know that we've got that change coming down the line. And, you know, it's legislation that we went after specifically for, you know, for a very important reason and no staffing increase. So let's talk a little bit about, since you handle all the revenues, if there's a change in fees for that. Now, you just gave me some ridiculously large number of transactions that you...
That would increase, you know, like it...
So how many transactions are you handling?
Well, for instance, the cash receipts was when I looked it up, a hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand cash receipts were processed just last year. Twenty-nine thousand invoices and then we pay twelve hundred employees every week, bi-weekly.
And each of those, so for example, in the fee area, we'd have to consider the cost of fees.
They could increase, or they could decrease, I mean, if people stop using something, a fee that we had. You increase it, we might actually see a reduction, so it could go the other direction depending on what it is we're increasing.
But you'd be handling more volume, I guess is what I'm saying.
Our volume seems to be very consistent as I look back over the last few years. Stays at the same level or a little bit higher, a little bit lower, but in the same vicinity, not a dramatic change.
You know, I think Sharon, I don't want to speak for the rest of you, but I think on the twenty-fourth, Bob, are you... I think I'd like to invite you.
What is the twenty-fourth?
You don't have to invite her, you can order her.
Yes, I'm your employee.
And I say that because as we start to, you know, really try to have an analysis discussion of, you know, revenue and expense, not like this, but in a more philosophical way. I think that there's real value in having someone like you at that, in that discussion. I'm guessing you guys probably agree with that and at least be available to us.
Absolutely. So the volume and the nature of what we do does not decline based on our financial situation that we find ourselves in. So to cut staff here would really be painful for us because our volume is not going to go down. We have nine thousand parcels and assessing is doing all of that, the bill is still going out, we're still collecting all that real estate tax. All of that stuff still has to be done and I don't think anybody would argue that they want any of that to go away. You don't want to not collect the money, you want to pay the bills, you have to pay the payroll. And so our functions are not something that we can stop doing, I guess is my point. And we are in fact going to do a little bit more in fiscal eighteen because of that senior tax relief. But our assessor assures us that he thinks that, you know, he can cross-check some of our collectors to oversee these applications and see if we can determine eligibility and do it without adding anybody and hopefully we can.
It's the Redding way. Right.
Also, I think we've got a lot of volunteer help from the senior.
He could probably get some tax workers to assist us, absolutely. So I didn't have a whole lot to share, so if you have any questions.
Meaningful, yeah. I think you're good.
I'm good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob is back.
Bob is back.
Let's see. I'm going to quickly go over our benefits and sort of miscellaneous costs. Benefits is clearly the most part of that, and I'll drill down into health insurance a little bit. Page fifty-eight of your handout. As I mentioned earlier, the retirement assessment is not going up four and a half percent next year, and it actually didn't go four and a half percent this year, even though we thought it did. So you can see the actual is about a hundred thousand less than what we needed this year. So that'll be one of the budget amendments in April Town Meeting, we have an extra hundred thousand dollars, which we do not need going forward. Page fifty-eight.
Do you have the Munis number right around there?
So if you look at, I'm looking at the Munis page fifty-eight. I think it's sixty as a document. So if you look at retirement assessment, it's, it's only going up one point six percent, and the rest of it's fairly boilerplate. Worker comp, not a big change, very small change. As you would guess, because of the FTE reductions in the school and the town side, it's only right to increase the unemployment budget. Every time we lay off significant amount of staff, that's a pretty significant cost. They should handle that. Here's health insurance, seven and a half percent is what FinCom allowed us, if you will, to say, I think it was seven and a half, but I want to share with you an interesting peer community study that we did. This might be a little hard to read, no, it's not too bad. There's our twenty-five peer communities, at the bottom you see an average. At the top, it's a little harder to read, but it's annual spending. And I think importantly is, and this is the latest data that's available from the state, so we looked at the period two thousand and seven, which is the earliest data they had, to two thousand and fourteen. And annually, Redding's actual expenditure, no monkey business, actual expenditure is up four point two percent in health insurance.
Annually?
Annually. I dare say that in the private sector, that would be outstanding. But when your revenues are going up two and a half or three percent, this is bad, and that's, that's one of the problems we have. But you can see Redding is really, is doing okay relative to our peers. You know, four and a half percent is the statistical average, I still think North Andover was doing something funny to have a reduction. I don't know what, well, I think they.
Stop paying the bills.
I mean, they went from nine thousand to six thousand, they must have just laid off like two-thirds of their workers or something, I don't know. But even allowing for that, you know, we are below average in our run rate. So that was good, and the employees work hard at this, actually. We have to negotiate this with the PEC. It's all the unions of the School Department, the Town, and the Light Department that collectively bargain with the Town Manager. We've had a historically good relationship, effectively we're seventy-one, twenty-nine percent partners on the same problem. The Town pays seventy-one percent, the employees pay twenty-nine percent. That's also a slightly high figure for employees relative to our peers. Our peers are still closer to twenty-five percent, although they're, they're climbing up, they used to be down below twenty percent, they're definitely climbing up. And at twenty-nine, we're still ahead of already every community. Yeah, yeah.
So this also includes the buyback feature that we have.
Correct.
To choose a spouse, a spouse's coverage instead of our.
We've done that, I think, for three years, or maybe four years, I think we've saved about half a million dollars, does that sound right? So we're paying some employees not to take health insurance, it's like paying the farmer not to farm corn, because it's too much corn.
How many people have actually taken, what, taken that?
Do you know how much a year, is it like fifteen a year, or something like that? Maybe it's more.
How many people, it's increased over the past two years, I'm guessing it's around thirty-five.
Yeah, so that, so, let's say it's thirty-five, that's, just to remember, that's a split between Light Department, Water, Sewer, Stormwater, and General Fund, so it's not all a savings in the General Fund.
This is a blended number then, this is not on the screen, it's dead of that.
This is only General Fund, this is only General Fund expense. But that, that program has reduced our cost. For those that are not familiar, we effectively, you have to meet certain parameters. If you've been on the health insurance for the town for two or more years consecutively, and you have a spouse that has an alternative plan that is recognized under federal and state law, we will pay twenty-five roughly, twenty-five percent of the savings for them to exit the Redding plan, to go on to a spouse's plan, and we keep seventy-five percent of the savings. So that's something that few communities have done, but it's becoming increasingly popular. You know, it's, it's not a good long-term solution to the health insurance problem, but it's a pretty good short-term solution for Redding.
Can we increase the splits and get more people?
We've talked about that, and our splits are a little bit higher than the few peers that do it. We did increase it from roughly twenty to twenty-five percent, and we did elicit a little bit more interest, but generally speaking, I think that seventy-five, twenty-five is about the right place.
Well, you've got to redirect the cost. You know, I mean, you're, there's added cost to the family when they, you know, it's from one pocket or the other. So they have to, you know, they've got to show a net gain in order to make that change. I wouldn't make that change unless it was a net gain, so.
And as a percent of the budget, I hadn't run it off this chart, but I had run it a year or two before. Redding spends about ten percent of its budget on health insurance. There are some communities, not necessarily our peers, typically cities, that spend twenty percent of their budget on health insurance. So although health insurance is a, is obviously a national problem and a local problem, in Redding, it's not as bad as it could be. The problem is, we have a relatively comparably low baseline expenditure, but that does not mean that our annual increases are also well behaved. I have not heard a formal number out of any insurer for next year, but informally I'm hearing the GIC will be above a ten percent increase. I would expect our health insurance Plan Maya will be something very expensive, although I don't know where. It's such an impossible area to predict. We, we do have good relations with the unions. We used to be able to have bells and whistles available to reduce premiums. Honestly, at federal level, two and a half years ago, those bells and whistles all went away. No one knows how to price health insurance anymore, it's not an actuarial science anymore. We used to be able to say, well, if you change your copay for the emergency room from fifty dollars to two hundred dollars, you'll save a quarter of a percent on your, on your premiums. No one can say that anymore, they don't know what the cost of health care is.
Is it where the premium line is, is up as high as it is?
Well, we don't have the tools to combat it anymore, so for many years, we, we did a, we basically pushed costs onto employees, quite frankly. You know, hundreds of thousands of dollars got negotiated, if you follow Dan's earlier comment, onto the users. So the more you used health insurance, you know, we had those that use it the most pay the most. And again, it was collectively bargained, everyone agreed it was a good idea. We would still, we would have the appetite to do more of that, but those tools don't exist right now.
It was easy, there was a time when it was easy to have a discussion around how those tools work. They don't, there's no uniformity to the way that those tools work anymore, they're kind of all over the place, so. I'm guessing that's not going to change.
The only tool that we've heard of is a limited network, is out there certainly in the private sector, and one has been offered to us. But just as an example, Children's Hospital in Boston would not be part of our health insurance anymore. And so when I say that, I don't mean the copay would be worse, I mean, if you go to Children's Hospital, you are entirely on your own. So that's also a philosophical discussion. As an employer, is that the right thing to do to our employees? If suddenly one of their kids gets sick and they have to go to Children's, is that position we want to put our employees in?
People come all over the world to their hospital.
Yeah, we generally decided no, that that's, that's not responsible, that's not being a responsible employer. But that's the kind of, sort of outrageous choices you have.
Well, luxury having that right down the street.
There are some of, some of these blended approaches to self-insuring as well, that are.
Yeah, Judy's talked about that, and he comes from that background.
You know, and they can create savings, but there's a certain element of risk, because you're, there's a certain element of what you're self-insuring in. So that can dramatically change your premium inflow, you know, so you could have a three-month cycle where it's X, and then it's X in a multiple for a six-month cycle.
Our pockets aren't deep enough to take that out.
You'd be, you'd be amazed at the businesses that are rolling that dice just because this expense has gotten so big.
That's right, yeah.
It's a, it's a risky proposition.
Yeah.
And I, I don't think it's one a municipality should embrace.
We don't.
Or at least you can look at it, but you've got to understand what the backend is, too.
Yeah, and the backend for, in my mind, for municipality is you can't go bankrupt. I mean, technically you can, but that's not a realistic option, whereas if I were running a company, I'd be willing to roll the dice and say, hey, if it doesn't work, we close.
Yeah.
No problem. But really, the bottom line here is that Redding has done a pretty good job in health insurance, better than our peers, and four percent doesn't sound bad, it's bad, you know, given our revenues, four percent is bad.
Well, it's bad when you have a two and a half percent growth rate on your revenue, it's, you know, and it becomes one of your major expenses, what do we pay? What's our cost?
Well, here it is, it's almost eleven million dollars next year in a hundred million dollar budget, so again, it's right around ten percent. And, and it's growing faster than any other expense, so it's going to go up as a percent, and it's, it's a national problem.
Yeah.
And I don't mean to throw my hands up and say we can't do anything, because we, we try, but.
No, but the exponential impact of that over the next ten-year cycle, for example, a lot of that just gets back to a rhythm. I mean, it's, it's that simple. The runaway of that, it ever increasingly becomes a bigger share of the total revenue package, particularly, and the revenue package can only grow at two and a half percent, so.
Yeah. That really wraps up benefits, there's nothing else interesting, but, you know, benefits at a run rate of almost six percent are clearly a challenge for the town. You saw all the other numbers, you know, kind of not that far away from zero, this is the challenge. Again, the Finance Committee has a, I guess I'll say, an informal policy that we budget a certain amount for an increase every year. We have two cushions if it's higher. The first is, the FinCom has said that they will supplement with additional free cash. Any increase that's higher, say the seven and a half percent we budgeted. But it's also important to keep in mind that we have budgeted five hundred thousand a year for OPEB, other post-employment benefits. That's retiree costs, and in theory, it'd be a bad idea, but in theory, we have a five hundred thousand dollar cushion that we could use against a spike in health insurance for any given year. But, but that really brings in the.
That's just, that's just exacerbating a problem.
Well, as I say, that brings into another discussion that really does sort of bother me. The Town is not doing a very good job, or a perfect job, on its long-term liabilities. And other towns, in fact, almost every town in the past has gotten into problems with pensions because they didn't fully fund their pensions. Just pay as you go. So their workforce was accruing future pension liabilities, but they didn't worry about that, they just paid out the retirees that left. And eventually, there became a huge gap in corporate and, you know, nonprofit and profit America, where pensions became an out-of-control problem. We had a lot of pension reform, both for the public sector and the private sector. Pensions are important, they were protected at the federal level by a lot of, from a lot of corporations that went bankrupt. But corporations and municipalities have an obligation to fund their pension fund fully. So you see, we're paying generally four and a half percent a year on pensions in order to fully fund by, I don't know, two thousand and twenty-nine, I wonder who it is. And then we'll drop down a million and a half or so, we won't need to do that catch-up. Meanwhile, we're sitting here, and we're not fully funding our other post-employment benefits, our health insurance retirees, which is mandated by state law, it's not like we can't do it. So we're funding five hundred thousand a year in the General Fund, and we know the real cost is somewhere between a million and a half and two million a year. So we know we're underfunding that.
And we have a growing pool of retirees who have happily the prospects of living much longer.
Yeah, yes, indeed.
So, I mean, you stop to think about, again.
We try to. Yeah. Yeah, so I'm not happy that we're not fully funding it, the Light Department is, is paying theirs, is it a twenty-year schedule, I think? Eighteen, and the Water, Sewer, Stormwater are also funding, because they don't have Prop two and a half, quite honestly, we can't afford to. I'd like to. But, you know, are you going to lay off teachers and police officers, or are you going to do this, and that's a hard question. You know, we still do have five hundred thousand in the budget, it's a drop compared to what we should have, but it is always an available option to fund something.
When does the OPEB liability show up in our balance sheet?
Now.
Do you know what it is? Is it eighty million or something? Sixty-seven million? It is moving on to the balance sheet, or already has.
Well, it used to be a note in the back, now it goes to the front.
Now it's on.
Yeah, I mean, that's the. So our, our balance sheet now shows like, you know, red alert flags, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, that we're technically bankrupt, we're really not, and, and the rating agencies understand that. But the reason why they took it out of the notes and put it on the front is exactly what you just described, is so that we don't forget about it. But to our benefit, we, or to our credit, we haven't forgotten about it, we've put in as much as we can over the years, and, you know, compared, you know, quoting our auditors, is that we're in better shape than most, and we have a better commitment than most of, of the other clients that they work with. So, you know, we're trying to do the right thing as much as we can.
Bob, one quick go back on the insurance premiums, do we have visibility, maybe probably don't, to the loss ratio by the carrier, or to how much of that premium is, kind of think of it as a risk premium, I'm talking about the future versus actual payout?
Surprisingly, we actually have all that, they give it to us. I'm not sure what I should say in public, but we're not a very good customer to have. We're not a very profitable customer. We're a nice customer.
So there's not much of a risk premium built in, is there?
Not, not for the current insurance plan we have. You know, we've been there so long, they know us really well, so there's not a level of unpredictability, and that's something. If there's no other questions, I think we'll turn to, was it Facilities next?
Yeah. Bob, before you go, I'm sorry, I was holding a question. Back to the insurance for a second, so our current system is a PPO-based plan, not HMO?
Both.
Both?
Yeah.
Okay, so the only comment I would make is that in industry today, the common practice is to offer different types to different people, different premiums. Those are much more expensive than HMOs are less. So if we in fact just have a PPO, that is kind of more on the high end of things. And maybe at some point worth reviewing, having different options available and see what we can do with that. I understand the children's hospitals a lot quite well, but depending on, you have children, don't have children, it makes sense not to have that same PPO plan.
You know, in the past, we've looked at all the options, there's a fellow we work with at Maya that's, I'll call him an actuary, I'm not sure if that's technically right, but as you deal with finance people like that, they're not capable of lying, because the numbers are the numbers, so they can't lie. So he's really good, he's really an interesting guy to chat with. We've kicked a lot of ideas around over the years, and they introduced what was called a tiered plan, I won't take this too long, but they thought that a tiered plan of rating physicians in hospitals, level one, two, or three, would fix everything. And let's just say it hasn't at all. And as soon as they did it, they priced our PPO and our HMO, in my estimation, far too close together, and we told him that. So we said, all right, so do we have to do your job and price them apart to make people want to choose the HMO? And he said, no, it's not going to matter, they're going to become the same kind of plan, because it's the tiering that's going to influence pricing. So three years down the road, he says, okay, you were right, tiering didn't work at all, and your HMO and your PPO are too close together, what do you want to do? That just shows you, he's an expert, that's his business.
So to your point, it doesn't seem as though there's a big, in a, in a normal world, there is a big disparity. It sounds like that's not what we're experiencing at all, so.
You know, when you look at, again, we could spend hours on that. You look at the lack of transparency in the medical community, it's really hard to know, if you're going to go get an MRI, it's hard to price shop, it really is. And you feel like you're being disloyal to a doctor when you say, I'm not getting that one, I'm going over here, it's the same equipment. It's certainly true, and generally speaking, that PPO services, the same service is more expensive as a PPO than an HMO. So that it's better if you were to go through that serp as an HMO. That is true, however, the market is not pricing premiums that way, for reasons I can't begin to understand. They're going to pay for service with doctors instead of the cost of service, you know, the result of the health of the patient. You know, health insurance to me is a twenty-hour-a-year hobby to try to figure out what to do. So I, I don't, I appreciate the fact that it's very complex, but I don't understand why there aren't more creative solutions, I really don't. And I guess it just goes to show you that it's so volatile and unpredictable that you can't study with math right now. And maybe at some point, you can. And maybe at some point you can. Don't know. So we try to balance our financial exposure with our obligation as an employer, is the fairest thing I can say.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you. We're gonna do, this slide you're looking at right here is similar to last year, where we put up our mission statement and a department overview for the facility department. Presently, we take care of eight school buildings and nine municipal buildings within the town of Reading. Total one point one million square feet of usable space. We maintain, manage a staff of tradespeople, electrician, plumber, and carpenter, and we outsource the remainder of the trades to perform the mandated state inspections as well as the preventive maintenance program in all of the town and school buildings. We also are in charge of twenty-three full-time custodians, contracting cleaning at the high school and the Coolidge Middle School and the four town buildings, the Reading Public Library, Town Hall, Pleasant Street Center, and the police station. Last year, I mentioned some of the technology that we use to manage the buildings. The first one up there is Maintenance Direct, which is our work order system, which allows users in all of the town and school buildings to enter work orders that come into our office and where we dispatch to the different trades. And we track how much we're spending on equipment and where our time and resources are going. Facilities Direct utilizes a scheduled school rentals and invoicing. That position is a school department position, but that gentleman works in our department and does all the rentals for the school facilities within the town. FSR automation is a new one that we mentioned last year that we were going to be rolling out, and we just rolled that out last fall. It ties the rentals in with the energy management system at all of the school buildings and soon to be the town buildings also. What'll happen now is if we rent a space such as the Performing Arts Center at the high school and there's a rental going from six to ten at night, it links itself with the energy management system to occupy and unoccupy the space. We're already seeing savings by doing that. We're better controlled. There's less steps that need to be taken to, you know, give the users conditioned air or heat or whatever it might be. Critical alarm automation is another feature we're using, which we monitor all the key points in the energy management system. It sends out alarms via email or text if we have a low water temperature condition, a boiler that's gone down, or a low temperature in a wing of a building. It also produces a work order and dispatches somebody. So that's a real key feature right there for loss. Utility Track Plus is something also, we talked last year about rolling out, that we just rolled out in the fall. And we're now track, doing a much better job through this program, tracking our utilities and our consumption, where our spending is and where the costs are going across all the utilities in the town. And then obviously, the energy management system, which I just talked to you about, which has, we have controls at every building, energy management controls at all buildings except for the DPW garage.
Joe, two quick questions. To the earlier discussion on fees, is there any linkage that you know of between the cost of some of those heating, lighting, ventilation, air conditioning and the fees charged? You probably, you may not know. I'm just curious.
The rental fee is based on the amount of money it costs to run the building per hour, and it is broken down to that level.
And this is all on the school side, so you may not have the same on the town side?
Correct. It's on the school side that we have the use of school property that renters pay into, and then we pay back for the custodial fee to check if it's an overtime detail, for instance.
But these monitoring tools apply only to school?
Well, right now, we're using these, everything you're seeing right here is utilized fully except for the FSR automation, which we're going to start using that to rent the spaces on the town side.
So that will be happening coming into this next year?
That's the plan.
Yeah, we've discussed it with the superintendent.
Because that is a way to manage the software, to understand the software. It's not necessarily manage it.
It's also a softable discussion between three elected boards as a fee policy on room rentals.
Right.
And that's a big discussion, actually.
Yeah.
It's not often the three elected boards sit down and talk about something that's not a budget, but that is.
Because I think there's demand.
Oh, yeah. And historically, I'll say, generally speaking, the room rental fee on the town side's been really low. And the library, what is it? The library's ten bucks for four hours? You know, I would say it's a fair statement. I'll leave the library out. On the town side, to say we're not covering our costs of room rentals.
I'm sure of that.
Yeah. But now we have an ability to start figuring that out. Before, it would have been a bit of a gray area.
It's still a philosophical discussion. I mean, you know, certain things you want to encourage.
Yeah, because the building is going full steam, and it's nine o'clock time to get out of there, right?
Right.
Up until that point, it's...
Yeah, we're open a lot of hours a week, so it's already paying for that.
It'd be interesting to add to that discussion. I mean, necessity is the mother of invention. We have a need. It's likely an interesting opportunity to get into the discussion around harmonizing rental fees.
So I just listed some key department functions. I tucked on a few of them. Maintaining the work order system and managing workflow. Performing the routine maintenance repairs for all the buildings. Supporting preventive maintenance program, which is a big item. Provide project management. Collaborate with the permanent building committee. We do long-term planning, coordinating with outside contractors. Follow state mandated inspection schedules. Capital planning and project management implementation. Managing custodial service for all the town and school buildings and manage and track energy and fuel consumption for all seventeen buildings. This might be a little difficult to read, but this just shows you the amount... There was twenty-four hundred work orders that we did over the course of a year. And it just shows you the times when there's a large spike, like right here in June, where we had, I believe, over on the right-hand side, it was like fourteen percent of the total work order happened in June of sixteen. And that's when the school year ends and we get really busy with work orders. And that's when we have a lot of work, productive work going on in the buildings. And then again, over here in September, when the kids come back to school, we get busy. When teachers come back, there's a lot of work requests that go on. Stuff that might have gotten missed that, you know, wasn't put in a end-of-year repair list or what have you. So this just gives you an idea...
Did I want to hear from you at Christmas time, though, right?
Right. Right. So it just gives you a general idea where it's all happening. This is the org chart for the facilities department, shows you myself. We have an administrative secretary, assistant director, our maintenance technicians, town coatings, and the cleaning contract. And on the schools, there's a school facilities manager who's in charge of the twenty-three custodians and the town, the school cleaning contract for the high school and the Coolidge Middle School. And like I mentioned, we have a rentals coordinator who handles all the school rentals that's paid by the school department and event technicians, which are students. This next slide here is, again, this is just more of what I've talked about last year. It just gives you just a general overview of all of the buildings in the town of Reading, the year they were constructed, the year that any renovation took place, the use and the square footage of each location. The two newest ones being the repair cabin and the cemetery garage at the bottom. So I thought we'd talk a little bit about the capital projects that were completed. We did a, this first item was in coordination with the school technology and the town technology department, which was replacing the UPS battery backups in the server room at the high school as well as the data center at the D. We did Main Street fire flooring replacements. We did police station carpet replacements. We did some carpeting over at the Kilim. That slide over to your right shows the High D area out back, the media center, with new carpet installed with high visibility edging on all the edge of the stairs. We did a kitchen, an epoxy floor replacement at the Wood End School. We did more carpet replacing, replacement at the Parker Middle School, same at the high school. We did a main entrance door of the DPW garage, which was in need of replacement. And we did a lot of sidewalk repair around the high school. The projects that are remaining to be completed are some upgrades to the HVAC system at Wood End as well as the, an upgrade for all the town buildings that have the honeywell control package in them. We're going to be doing an upgrade to that as well as a new roof on the West Side Fire Station. These will all be done before July.
Joe, what's the upgrade on the Wood End HVAC system?
We're going to be installing return air fans in that building. As the way that building is built, it tends to, it does overheat over there.
Oh, yeah, definitely does.
Yep. And we've talked, our controls contractor as well as our HVAC contractor, and we'll put some return air vents in there, which will get a little bit more outside air coming into the building. So then on a warmer day, it'll be able to modulate the outside, the temperature in the building better. We have, we had installed exhaust fans in the atrium up really high about seven years ago. It helped, but, and we have some fans in the rooms, but this should take the curse off. That's the hope.
Okay. Is it a taxing problem in the system itself, the HVAC system?
It's just the way the building is...
Taxing it more or is it just the design?
It's just the design of the building. Some special projects that we completed within our budget. As we all know about the LCCA, the Lead Contamination Control Act. We had several schools affected by that. We completed those repairs for the elementary schools largely. We did some Barrows, at the Barrows Elementary, we did some soffit work over there with some new vents. We completed roof inspections for all town and school buildings. It helps us build our capital plan. We did interior painting at all the schools last summer. We implemented utility track, as I had mentioned before. Did some ceiling fans on the fourth floor of the high school. We did an LED light conversion, and we took advantage of a rebate from Reading Municipal Light last, last summer, I believe it was, and in the first, I believe through December, Kevin, correct me, it was about a ten percent savings in our electricity consumption over there at Eaton. We replaced about a hundred and thirty-five fixtures in the hallways over there at the Eaton, and it made a huge difference. We're also, just a side note, we're going to be taking advantage of the Community Compact Grant. We're going to be doing some more work, possibly a town hall for the interior of all the common area lighting and take advantage of some LED ones over there also. That'll be happening soon.
Joe, at this point, are there any other properties that are quarantined because of the heat issue? No, they're all addressed. There's nothing yet quarantined.
Well, at the Kilim, we are using, it's hand wash only, and we're providing drinking water for all the kids over there. We've been doing that since the kids came back to school.
Is that containment, or do you expect to correct that going forward?
That's part of a larger renovation of that building to fix that problem over there. It's not a, it's not just the fixtures.
It's in the pipes.
It's in the pipes. We finished the town hall exterior painting this year. We did half of it the year before, and this year, we finished the outside of the building. It was the annex that we finished. We did some work in inspectional services, some renovations of some offices over there. And that slide shows you the DPW. We expanded their break room over there and renovated their kitchen, which was in, they were in dire need of it down there. And we did painting in this building right here. We painted the inside, the entire building. This was done two years ago, but the rest of the building was completed. And we did the outside of this facility. This just gives you a sort of a breakdown of the amount of in-house labor hours that we use for some of the larger special projects. How many work orders and the average hours per work order for some of the bigger things, just to give you an idea where some of the work going for some of those larger ones. That chart on the right there shows you where the work goes. I guess it's by craft or by trade, you know, boiler, carpentry, clocks, bells, custodial, custodial equipment repair, energy management, doors and hardware, electrical. Two hundred and forty-seven work orders for our electrician. That's someone we hired two years ago. We were outsourcing that. We brought that in our department, and we're saving quite a bit of money. Very rarely do we call the outside contractor unless it's a really large job.
So he's busy every day?
He's busy every day.
It's like the HVAC is pretty busy.
Yep, the HVAC. That'd be something we would love to be able to bring a trade like that in, but it's really, it's outsourced. It's so specialized, it's...
It changes all the time.
Yeah, it's difficult.
Plumber, too.
We have a master plumber here that works for us also, yeah.
Good to see pests is only thirty-seven.
Yeah. This just gives you an idea where the work orders went by location. And obviously, the high school, you can see four hundred and twenty-nine work orders up there. Barrows, a hundred and sixty-one. You know, the town buildings is less just because, you know, they represent, it represents much less square footage. But that's where the work is going.
It's an interesting study.
It's a very interesting study. I'm amazed to see Wood End is one of the higher elementary schools. Actually, the highest elementary school for work order.
It's our newest one.
Yep.
Can you stop to think about it? Maybe it's not as shocking as you might think.
And it isn't, it doesn't necessarily mean the amount, it all breakdowns, too. It could be just work requests that are people are putting in, too. There's a further breakdown behind that.
Okay.
You know, it could be delivery, it could be custodial, it could be, you know. This chart fluctuates. The high school is always going to be the number one.
Right.
It's three hundred and seventy.
Well, I mean, just major-wise, it's just...
We don't have a major issue with our newest elementary school, right?
No, no.
The way it reads up here is not...
Nope, nope. This is just a purpose summary fiscal two thousand sixteen. Just gives you an idea. Again, this just breaks it down even further into like critical alarms. I'd spoke to you folks about facility schedule, general grounds, general maintenance. Just gives you an idea where we're going every day.
Joe, these are reports you get out of the tools you described earlier?
Yeah, this is from Maintenance Direct, which is one of the modules we use through School Dude, it's called.
So are these independent tools, or is this kind of a suite that we get?
It's a suite. All these are part of that whole package.
Okay.
Yep. So this is, this one right here is, this is a, this is part of utility track right here. And what we did here is did a thirty-month, thirty-month energy usage for, I believe this is natural gas consumption over here. So you can see over the thirty months for two thousand fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, and you can see where we're tracking right now at the high school, which is the largest consumption user. We're in pretty good shape. This next slide, that just shows you the boiler room at the high school. Those are the two Cleaver-Brooks boilers we heat the building with, shot primary heat source. So in addition to tracking the consumption of single-fueled fuel source, this next one's going to show you all three utilities, water, natural gas, and electricity. And I don't pay any attention to this on the bottom because this was a partial year. This is when we were learning how to use the product. But this just gives you an idea what the cost profile looks like, and here we are down here. So we're tracking pretty good year-to-date right now.
How are you tracking cost of fuel? Are you putting in costs every month?
We're putting in cost and we're putting in consumption.
Every month? So is the cost of natural gas change your upgrade tools?
Yep.
It really tells you where you need to go next if there's a maintenance issue that's driving the cost.
We were doing this manually before, and I remember a few years ago, we had a, our water bill spiked really high at the Coolidge. And for no reason at all, and it just went through. The roof was up like thirty, and we had steam leak under the building. So if you're not watching it, you're not tracking, you would have not, never...
Manually, there's almost no way to keep up with it the way you can keep up with the suite.
Correct. Yeah, and we're just scratching the tip of the iceberg right now.
Yeah, these management tools are exceptional.
So you can almost predict, kind of, you can make a capital plan off of this, sort of, like, you know, what's wearing out faster, maybe?
The one we use for that is the work order system because we track what we're spending on repairs. And if we see a piece of equipment that's getting to the end of its useful life, and it's a repeat offender, and it just keeps costing money or throwing money into it, that's when we track it, you know, on the capital plan. We took a lot of things off the capital plan. Our capital plan is a lot lighter than it was ten years ago because of the performance contracting initiative we did. So as far as mechanical equipment goes, we're in really good shape. So as far as mechanical equipment goes, we're in really good shape.
So we're scheduling PMs off this as well?
Yep, we, it, I, um, I mean, I could have shown you all that, I just wanted to give you an idea. The, um, preventive maintenance module also spits out, every month we get PMs that come out, tells you which, which, the boilers are ready for it now, or the rooftop equipment or the chiller at the town hall. So we, that's automatically generated and our vendors get that and they come in and do the, uh, the regularly scheduled PMs.
And our boilers are single fueling, like you don't have any dual fuel?
So the, here's the town facilities budget right here. We're just showing what our salaries were this year, 2017, and the request for 2018. And I believe that's up, it's 5% and that's a one, there's a, um, there's an increase for salary as well as a $5,000 increase in overtime. It's a one-time expense, um, to cover some painting projects that we're going to be doing, um, on the town side with in-house and outsourced, try to get the most out of it. And custodial services and supplies is, is level and, uh, that includes the town cleaning contract for this building and the three others that I mentioned earlier. The core facilities represents a 2.5% increase. Maintenance expenses in this line right here is equipment for the facilities guys for tools, uh, some consulting fees are in there and that's just up a small, small amount right there. School repair expenses, I, I lumped this number altogether, there's a lot of detail in my budget, but I thought it'd be easier to show it this way. Um, this is level for, for school repair expenses. It includes extraordinary repair, um, maintenance repairs and then regularly scheduled PMs. It's all rolled into that number right there.
So Joe, when you get to the bottom line and you're, and you, you're forecasting a 2.5%, obviously that's the number you need to live inside because theoretically that's the revenue stream that comes. Um, is it, would it be hard for you to identify what's missing because you're, have the constraints of 2.5? Follow what I'm saying? In other words, I'm guessing that some of these are, that you forecasted a budget tied to what you have to work with, which actually makes sense. So the question becomes, what aren't you doing?
If you had one more dollar worth of spending?
Yeah. There, there would be things I would prob, the, the things that we miss out on are the aesthetics that, that people like to have, which is like painting, which we fund that usually if we have, if we have a surplus in our budget. Um, we did that within, you know, and, you know, last year because, you know, things like carpet, um, painting like inside of the scene, you don't have to have it, but it's a nice to have.
Right.
Um, you don't want the buildings to get totally beaten down. It's a public building, people come into them every day. Where we try to control our costs is, is the biggest, is the moving target is the utilities budget, where we, we control, you know, when we occupy the building, how long we occupy it and that's, we, so we, that's where you're really managing it. That's, it's like.
And that's.
That's our biggest number.
That's your biggest number by a lot.
That's our biggest number.
And the software is helping to that.
It is helping, it is helping. We look at it every day. So that total down there represents a, um, a 5% increase and it's largely due to, um, an increase in utility costs, electricity, natural gas. Town repair expense went up by $60,000 because we're going to be doing some work at the police dispatch, uh, here at this building. We're going to, uh, some work up on the second floor, finishing the job, I'm going to say, which is carpeting and some furniture and then over at town hall doing some painting on the inside. But that building has not really been painted in 20 years. We've had bits and pieces in the last 11 years that I've been here. And that's the bottom, the bottom line number right there, just under 30.
Part about the utilities that doesn't make sense immediately is you could get an increase to price or an increase to consumption. I assume, uh, consumption's down because you're using modern lighting for example and modern, your modern boilers, so are you saying it's all price driven? It's all the cost of the fuel? I know it's uncertain, it depends on degree days and all this other nonsense.
Yeah, I think you're asking a complicated question particularly because we have a new library.
Yeah.
So library aside, that's probably a fair comment that consumption is not up, I won't say it's down.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but remember some of the buildings are in use, um, you know, 24 hours a day or at night at least. So even though there's more efficient ways, it's not necessarily the building is used less.
Well, year over year with the library example is, you know, that was often a lethal location that, you know, it's really hard to manage, you know, the, not hard to manage, but it's a whole different look compared to what's going on today.
Well, the library's open now, that's great.
Yes.
So, I mean, you know, you didn't have a lot of utility bills when the walls were being knocked down and put back up.
The, the buildings are in high, in high use and in high demand, all of them, especially on the school side. And, you know, if you go by any of the schools on the weekends, they're in full use, the field houses.
The problem you run into there too is that, you know, they're in high demand, which means the systems are, the systems get less efficient, you know, they run in a high demand as well too. So, you know, you could have a fuel cost be the same year in and year out and you spend more, use it because your system is less efficient.
Well, let's answer the question about, you know.
Fees.
Fees. That's where I was going. Everything circles back to fees. That's certainly something that has to be contemplated, you know, to your point, yeah. You know, I, if the field house is running and running and running, and I know it is, I mean, I, you know, except in the middle of the night, somebody's there.
Right.
Um, and so at a certain point, no matter how efficiently you, how efficient you make it, the wear and tear in the system ultimately is going to demand a certain amount of capital.
Mm-hmm.
And so, you know, what you're really talking about is depreciable light.
Yeah.
So then what you have to talk about when you build the fees, I mean, these are all, you know, pieces, component pieces of the equation when you drive those fees. We said earlier, you talked about needing actual costs. It sounds like at least on the energy side, you, and heating side, you've got a great baseline now that goes back a couple of years. To John's point, do we include recapitalization in the cost basis, Bob?
Um, if you go back to the Birch Metal Field Lighting discussion.
Yeah.
Uh, you cannot pass the cost of capital along in a fee.
Right.
Which doesn't make any economic or logical sense, but that's state law, just the operator.
Right.
So what, what John said is absolutely sensible. You should be thinking about it as a depreciation account, it's just that you can't recapit.
But it's, but when you're, when you're, when you're thinking forward, there's a recapitalization that you have to consider, you know, in the bigger picture of, you know, facilities and capital expense.
And, and capital is, is clearly, you know, important in different ways at different departments, but it's an integral part of the operation of the facilities department as opposed to you will replace equipment occasionally and fire. The investments we've made in capital on the facilities have significantly reduced the operating costs and that was the whole point.
Well, the part that's missing that is pick the residual operating costs and then report into fees for example.
The, the big thing is too, is to keep in mind is that, you know, running a successful facilities department means giving us, you know, and funding us so that we can make sure our preventive maintenance plan stays robust and we, and we do, it's not just the state inspections that we have to do, it's the other things that we're doing that need to continue to happen, which is three filter changes a year on the rooftop equipment and the unit ventilators, boilers getting opened up and serviced every year. And I've worked in other municipalities where that doesn't, that doesn't happen.
You don't do that, you're, all you're doing is creating a bill.
Right, exactly.
Now for future delivery.
You're also voiding other warranties on these mechanisms as well by not doing.
That's right.
Joe, are the fuel costs locked in by contract or? Got to stand up, Mark, sorry. Sorry, Joe, are the fuel costs that you got built in there, are they locked in by, do we have contracts for them?
We have a contract with, um, Traditions Energy for our natural gas, our supplier through 2018. With RMLD, we don't have to.
Yeah, that's just work customer like anyone else.
Continues to be the cheapest electricity in the state though, so, you know.
Right.
So are we on the, are, are we on the, on the, uh, in the money or out of the money on our, on our forward gas contract?
I haven't a clue. That's a good question.
I think, we're in a good, we're paying $6.38 per decatherm, which, um, they shopped it around in the, uh, last summer and that's a pretty competitive price from what I'm being told.
As opposed to a pay-as-you-go kind of.
Exactly. This just shows the budget in terms of a comparative from last year, this year, the next year. And then we just did it in one more way for you to see. And again, that's the core facilities budget broken down.
That's very interesting. Joe, what did you turn back in last year in, last, if you recall?
Do you know, Sharon? I don't know.
Just curious.
I don't know.
This is so different than most of the rest of the town. When you look at, you know, what, you know, what money is spent in a relative. It's all in the tools, this is all.
Yeah.
I mean, the salaries are, you know, insignificant in the big picture of the work that gets done and the, you know, and the, the money it takes to.
Right.
Make it work.
One of the things we're looking at, we've been talking with Bob and John Darty about is, uh, is may, you know, trying to bring in work that we're outsourcing right now into the facilities department and we're looking at possible ways to do that, um, maybe through people, um, but, you know, we do, we do outsource quite a bit right now and like when we know bringing the electrician was a great move because we were able to save.
Yeah.
Over $140,000 a year by doing that at the time.
It's interesting. It's almost the, it's almost the opposite of, you know, the trend is, let's outsource everything, you know, we're saving, but it doesn't seem to prove out in, in, in facilities management. Because you keep them so busy.
Right. That's the key.
Yeah, and we run pretty, and I know we were talking about that earlier, we have three maintenance guys that do a million square feet of space. That's 300,000, 330,000 square feet per man that are, that are going through the 17 buildings every day.
I imagine the software just really helps them.
And the guys, the guys utilize it heavily. They enter all their time in, in the work order system every day. At the end of every day, they come in off the road so we know where they, you know, they try, they like it, they track their own time.
Yeah, it's quite a good system.
This, this is as good an example as any though, is when you compare the school and the town budgets, this is not labor intense. So that's why when you're seeing FTEs in a budget, um, it's labor intense. East and Fire are labor intense, but DPW and facilities are much less.
This was excellent report.
Thank you.
Very thought provoking in many ways.
Thanks, Joe.
Any other questions for Joe before he's done?
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you. Thanks. The last piece we have tonight, it's a quick discussion of capital and debt. And it will be quick. Uh, one of the questions asked during the summer and then in the fall with respect to the TLT litigation was how we're going to pay for it. And the answer was a certain amount of free cash, a certain amount of debt. And, um, I'm going to show you the impact of that debt, if you will, it's still a little So here is, that's still a little small, here's the capital plan for FY18. That 170,000 is an estimate, what we are spending less than the, the FinCom policy by a slight amount. Um, and I'm going to go into just a certain amount of detail, but I, I will tell you, compared to 10 years ago, the huge change is in facilities. You see some big numbers out here in FY20, 21, 22. Those are all roof projects, um, out here in the town side, those are roof projects in FY23 and 24. Aside from replacing roofs, um, the facilities capital plan is substantially less than it used to be. Um, and that's great. That's, that's the point of all the investment we made. Um, and you'd, you'd find similarly in the DPW budget especially, by replacing equipment more often, um, both in the fire department, police department, DPW, the DPW expense repair budget is much less than it used to be 10 years ago. I don't mean it's gone down as a slower rate, I mean it's actually lower than it was 10 years ago. So that's the reason you spend money on capital. I, I want to call your attention especially to this line item which is new called Permanent Building Committee. Even though it's a difficult year, I think it's really important to fund the Permanent Building Committee and you've heard some of the reasons why from them. Uh, we're in a position in the capital plan in FY18 and 19 to spend 150,000 each to give them some flexibility on some projects that we've discussed and I think that's important. They had asked for 100,000 more or less, 75 to 100,000, um, and that would be the more normal run rate after the next couple of years, but there are some pro, two projects in particular they're working on that I think will be really important. And I don't, I don't know the latest update on Killam, uh, but I do know the latest ups, update on Bigfield Vocational School. They were rated as the fourth or fifth worst school in the state a few years ago and they were just turned down for SBA funding. So that's probably not a good thing for Killam. Um, they proposed a new high school, 180 odd million, which I was a little surprised at, but it's apparently the going price for high schools.
That's the one they're going to go on right now, huh?
And honestly, as a vocational schools, I'm sure the kids could build it for less. And, you know, I don't know the vocational school expertly, but that's how it's been held together for so many years. There's a huge amount of pride up there among the students.
We're all building projects today.
And they have absolutely kept it together with glue and, and duct tape. It's just remarkable.
So do you know why they were denied?
No, I just heard that. Um, Joe, did you go, get to that thing?
Yeah.
Did they discuss it at all, the reason? I don't know if they knew then.
They didn't know then.
Okay. Yeah, I just heard that a couple of days ago.
That's, that's a stunning development statement. I mean, it's a big number, but still.
Yeah.
That is, is, is expensive as it is because of the type of building, it's a vocational school, the shops, you know, labs they need to build, so the price tag is a lot higher.
And the MSBA reimbursement rate, I don't remember what it was, it used to be whatever the highest rate of any community, which is usually Chelsea, which would have been 90%, but they've definitely passed some change of rules where it's going to be less. And if they didn't get funding this time, it was going to be 10% less in the future. They really wanted it this year.
Have, have we inquired what kind of, you know, where that school needs to be to get funded?
Uh, no, but one of our employees is actually going tomorrow to a meeting over there, Jane Milk, former school committee member in Tootsbury. Um, she's already made a contact with, I don't know if you remember, Marie for, Ari was on FinCom.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
She's now the assistant treasurer at the Volk School, so the two of them have already hooked up in that discussion. She was our rep for the school committee for a while too, right? So we'll get some good intelligence back about that. Um, a couple of other pieces of equipment in the facilities department, school department. Um, you can see that this is a pretty light repair schedule for school buildings generally. A lot of what, um, Joe described is done in the operating budget. We've had discussions recently about whether we should move some of this into the operating budget, I don't know yet, but there's the big roof numbers. You know, without, the roof repairs, there's almost nothing in this capital budget. It's because they're doing a good job. That doesn't mean things won't happen and they won't need money, but it's not planned out as knowing they'll need money.
About the classroom furniture, they're 65k, what's, is that just a refresh?
Uh, let's see where it is.
Top of the screen, just rolled up.
Yeah, I'm looking at the individual schools though.
Oh.
Uh, I don't know why I don't see it. Which category was it under? This is the total for all schools and then below it is the individual schools.
Okay, so it's not a singular.
It's a total for the whole schools.
Oh, so this one, this is for the current year, 65,000. Well, let's see where it was.
Right there.
Whoops, did I miss it?
Yeah.
Oh, there it is, Parker. I don't remember, Joe, do you remember what furniture they were buying?
Yeah, and that's actually, that's for, that's for a few different locations, but
Okay.
The replacement furniture in the schools.
Okay.
Which is the classroom furniture, yeah.
So it's, it's categorized under Parker, but?
It was delivered to Parker.
Oh, okay.
I don't know. Similarly, on the municipal side, here's a total of all the municipal buildings. And again, again, you see roofing here. Uh, and then this thing out here, I believe, is a rehab of the dispatch center in the police department, scheduled for several years from now. It's, we explored regionalization for a long time. It's clearly not going to work. It was actually gonna cost redding money. It might have still been at work, but, um, there's no appetite for it apparently in this area. And I'm sure the chief can talk to you about that tomorrow.
So in a general way, um, the TLT settlement is a capital expense. Cause it's tied to a capital project.
You'll see that because we had to borrow money for it.
Yeah.
We look at debt and capital together. That's just a way to pay for capital.
Right.
So we're doing less capital. You haven't seen the impact yet, but it's in recreation. Well, you've seen some of it, but it's really in recreation.
Is that pushing out the turf fields and, uh?
Here specifically is the turf fields. Actually, the two turf fields at the high school are, are in need of repair. In talking to them, it, it can't go much longer.
If you let that go.
Yeah. You're gonna lose the fields.
Yeah, you tend to double the cost of, of replacement or the fields go out of service.
Those are replaced costs or?
Uh, yes, so if you look at, uh, not next year, but the year after, the track for a hundred and fifty thousand, and this is the main stadium field for five hundred and fifty thousand. Um, they prefer to do that one first and to do turf two second, for whatever reason they discussed. Turf two is more expensive because it was done poorly the first time.
Right.
They should have turfed out to the fence. You remember that little grass strip around the edge? Well, that's gonna all get ripped up and done the proper way.
So that's gonna be, that's not a, that's not a maintenance issue, that's a redo.
That's correct. There are maintenance issues, but they've kept it going as long as they can. And, uh, correct me, Joe, if you remember, but the turf fields when they were sold to us were advertised with a certain lifespan that is definitely not what has happened. They, I think they said twenty years and realistically it's twelve, ten to twelve.
Twelve years.
Yeah. So from now on, we have to realize when we buy a turf field, it's, you know, it's programmed obsolescence. Plus, we use it a lot.
Yeah. It gets, and this comes back to the capitalization.
Right.
Tied to use. You can't really tie that, you can't take that charge out there, even though people would pay it.
Right.
Because of the nature of the, of the product, but.
John, are they improving the technology by which they build turf fields?
Oh, yeah. I mean, it, you know, every year that goes by, that, you know, that turf gets better. And we actually had one of the first iterations of that. We did. It's.
A better for?
Well, and it's interesting, in the southern climates, they're moving back to natural grass.
Was there something wrong here where it's worn out prematurely, Joe? Joe? Was there something wrong here where this is worn out prematurely?
I, I think it's more of a, you're saying?
I think it is too.
The DPW does a good job of maintaining, they have a contract with them also.
And, you know, you're bringing in those little, you know, the, the little pellets are in. And you see that that maintenance is going on. But I think it's, and I've seen this on other fields in the area that are high use. Either high use or low maintenance. I mean, those, it almost doesn't seem to matter. You have great maintenance and high use, you know, you're gonna have a shelf life for that stuff. And if you don't have the maintenance and you have the use, they, they're like junk, you know, in, in no time.
You can't do it in the same year because you need a field that runs.
Right.
So, so we haven't seen the impact in this capital plan yet of the?
Well, here's, here starts the impact and it's, albeit it's a little obscure. This is Parker and this is a new turf field at Coolidge, which used to be three or four years into the future, maybe. Now, it's not even close.
Yeah.
Forget about it.
It's off on the horizon somewhere.
Right. So there, there's a direct impact. Playground program's not a problem every year. And then all of a sudden, you see a pretty, pretty much an absence of other capital in recreation. Birch Meadow lighting and phase two still to be discussed with the rec committee, whatever their schedule is, I honestly don't know. So that's a possibility. But all these other improvements were scheduled in the next couple of years and they are pushed up five to seven years. So here's the most direct impact. And, and frankly, and this was discussed at length with John Feud before he left. He said, these are all nice to haves. They are not, the turf is important. If you wanna have a field, you gotta replace it, but these are not essential.
And what's missing from there is a lot of the capital that private partners have put in. And that, that has been substantial in a lot of the recreational.
I mean, the youth baseball, they, they, they?
Well, youth baseball, Redding Baseball Club.
They do those fields every year, add their own capital.
Well, and not to mention the maintenance that goes on that, that happens on a regular basis, especially on the baseball fields. Because those guys just step up that, you know, there's been capital expenditure on their own equipment, you know, so that they can maintain them.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So what I learned at a budget parents meeting last night is that the, the kids or rather the parents do chip in and are gonna be chipping in more user fees for athletics, for the students.
The way I understood it was athletics and activities.
I'm sorry?
Athletics and other activities.
Yes. Yeah, yeah. But for the fields, it would be at Mose Athletics and, uh, band, marching band. They'll be increased use fee. So the, the kids and the parents are, are, uh, shoulder.
Yeah, but that's not, those, those don't cost, probably the cost of the fields, those are just for the kids participating.
That's program, that's all program related, no capital involved there. And that's not new. That's just become more onerous.
Right.
I mean, that, you know, those, those user fees have been in place for quite some time.
Yeah.
And that doesn't even begin to mention all the friends of organizations, friends of the band, friends of baseball, friends of, I mean, they literally, you know, those, those private alliances contribute unquestionably hundreds of thousands of dollars over the course of a year to help sustain those programs.
Quick question, Bob. The, um, the field improvements, it looks like they're spread out over a number of years for Killam, grainage and paving. Explain a little bit about what they're gonna be doing there. The shading there is actually, it's a little hard to see in black and white, but the three hundred and fifty thousand dollar project was scheduled right here in the current year. And it's now moved to here. The shading is actually showing you how it changed.
Sliding.
Yeah, sliding and sliding. So that was another one of those, if you will, nice to haves that we just couldn't afford to do.
So you moved that to twenty-four?
Partly influenced by the fact, if you're gonna rebuild Killam, you're not gonna do all that work.
That's exactly why I was asking the question.
Wouldn't that be part of the school project?
If there is a school project, I would certainly ask for it. I don't think the MSBA would pay you for that, but it should be done within a confined.
Even if they're not paying you for it, you shouldn't do it now.
Well, that's a project, yeah, that's a project we tried to do and couldn't find a contractor to do it.
That's right.
Not that long ago.
Oh, that's right.
That's moved in the last two years.
Yes.
So if I'm reading this right, the Hunt Park was already budgeted this year? So that's something you have to move forward on, the Hunt Park?
Yes.
Yes. The, the disassembling and the reassembly of the playgrounds?
Yeah, so that has to happen because we budgeted this year.
Have we already actually bought the stuff? I think we've already signed it.
I think it's done.
It's already in the middle of it, isn't it?
Yeah, I, I think that the, you know, the, the contract for the equipment and so forth was done. And at that point, you don't wanna put it in the warehouse. I mean, you know, and in addition to the fact that its utilization and its life, as it existed, I believe, you know, was really coming to its end. I mean, at least that was my understanding, I, you know, um, I'm not on the recreation department. I, you know, I mean, I'm liaison there, but I've heard a lot of discussion about that over the course of the last year.
Okay. There, okay. As a parent, I would say the playground was fine. So I, I'm just wondering why we're spending forty-five thousand to replace the playground that didn't necessarily?
Well, I mean, it comes, what it comes back to is this is capital expenditure and I think that there's a, sometimes you gotta almost, at least I, I can't speak for anybody else. I have to step away and remind myself that capital money is a totally different, comes from a different pile, if you will, than the budget money that would make a decision on what programs you could do at school or what you could do with public safety. So, you know, this is money that's earmarked, and Bob, you're gonna have to help me on this, but in a separate way from the operating budget.
It is. By policy, we spend five percent roughly on debt and capital. So if you weren't doing Hunt Park for forty-five thousand, you might be buying a pickup truck for forty-five thousand. It is, it's all the same money. Designed to be an investment in infrastructure to prevent costs in the operating budget. And it's, it's done well over the years. We're doing.
Yeah. We've got a park a year.
Yeah, and so, so that is not, in, in the big picture of how money's expended based on the revenue base that comes in, that is not detracting from anything that goes on in the school or in public safety. It's.
Thank you.
Yeah, now, and, and to be fair, that's a policy. It's, it's not a rule, it's not a law.
Yeah.
But, um, fifteen years ago, the town let recreation, or I'm sorry, let capital go down to, um, about fifty thousand dollars a year total. And as a result, the operating budgets got squashed with costs because stuff was breaking down. The high school was in terrible disrepair. It ended up costing more by being short sighted about capital funding. But that's always a temptation of saying, you know, let's just spend a couple hundred thousand, let's spend five hundred thousand less than capital just this year. And that's a real tough discipline question. Because you could do anything for, for one year pretty much. And if there was a one-time operating cost, you could say, let's not do as much capital. But if you're gonna be hiring staff, they're not a one-time cost. So that's the balancing.
And in forecasting cost, if you use, if you use a capital expenditure plan like this, it's so much easier. As Joe was pointing out, I mean, he has such a great degree of predictability as to what his costs are gonna be in facilities. And it's tied to how you're able to understand and manage what's going forward. And having a capital plan, you know, on the finance side actually helps you to do that, to, to measure your costs. It's like preventative, in a very simplistic way, it's like preventative maintenance undercar.
It's really strange, you know, good preventative maintenance works, swamping a capital budget. And managing capital budgets keeps it on the operating side. So it's really kind of symbiotic in that regard. You really have to do both and we've done that here.
Did we, um, I think it's a question for, for Chairman of the Finance Committee, but we did such a good job with capital that did we decrease the five percent?
We have, we have for two years and we have both, I am proposing to do that for a third, probably in a fourth year.
Oh, we have four percent?
No, it's, I think it's four and three quarters.
Four and a half.
Remember that as I, what's in front of me is debt budget. A lot of debt capital is already spent as debt. That's a sunk cost, if you will, we've already borrowed it. So when you talk about changing what's left, um, I think we're spending, you know, three percent in debt, two percent in capital, let's say. So you don't have a lot of flexibility in the capital plan as it is. If you were to cut, you know, if you were to go from five to four, you're basically doing half the capital spending you otherwise would have done.
What we actually did is we didn't change the policy below the number.
Right.
But what we've done is just kind of observing what's happening, where we are and the opportunity that's been a little bit less.
DVA from the past.
Yeah, so we're, we're teetering, but appropriately now because we said, okay, we are clear here for a year or two, we can do it this, this much lower. Not changing policy.
Yeah. Um, and, and lastly, I, I do wanna just explicitly show you, here's the cost of TLT litigation. So in addition to the rest of the construction fund plus free cap totaling three million, um, on page, Munis budget page seventy. Um, next year, the high school settlement will cost us three hundred and ninety thousand dollars as an estimate. We haven't sold the debt yet, but that's an estimate. And it'll decline to three hundred thousand over ten years. We'll pay it off in ten years.
That's debt service.
So that's, that's, that's a cost again that, you know, wasn't necessarily budgeted for or expected until relatively recent months.
But we would've spent that money on something.
And that's, the exact point is this would not have gone towards firefighters, police officers, teachers. It would've gone for recreation capital, some DPW.
All those, all those capital projects are moving out because of this settlement. And so, yes, you know, you're not taking away from the, however, you're clearly taking away from the capital infrastructure investment. And you're clearly increasing your cost.
Whatever that project.
Whatever that project's gonna be, because in some cases it takes about ten years. So God only knows. I mean, that project could go up by fifty percent, um, in that window of time.
The opportunity cost is enormous. And one area where redding is actually in good financial shape is at least one. Um, here's our debt service inside the levy for the next ten, fifteen years. Two million dollars next year, but it goes down to almost nothing and then does go to nothing. That's unusual. We tend to borrow for shorter periods of time to pay it off, to not pay interest. Whether that's a good or a bad idea, at least it gives us future flexibility. That's it, we have, that's all we have for debt, other than outside the levy.
That's what it is.
That's, that's.
Bob, where does it go to zero? I don't see that.
Twenty-eighth. It doesn't, but it stops right here. Two thousand twenty-nine is the last, uh, projected cost. So again, sticking to the five percent more or less, a little bit less, um, has really, really been a good thing for the town over the last ten years. It's really helped cut our costs. Uh, and that was really important. I, I do think someone made an observation that we've done such a good job. This litigation aside, I would've felt much more comfortable backing away from five percent and needing the five percent. That's probably brought us right back to needing it, unfortunately. Um, but, you know, again, there'll always be more projects. Um, the ones we know about that are larger are, are thought to be debt exclusions. We'll see. Don't know. Killam certainly would be a bigger enough number to be a debt exclusion.
So other than the TLT litigation, um, is there, are there any foreseeable need where we're gonna be borrowing within the levy, like big numbers?
Let's see if I've put any in. The only one I've actually put in here is that Birch Meadow Phase One lighting. Through two, three years from now to revisit it. That's something we can't revisit in the Neptunian. But that, there you see it right there. Uh, one and a half million over ten years. That's the only one I've got in there. There's some other things you see here, possible, not added. Cemetery garage building is still in the capital plan. These other ones are not. DPW, there's no number in there. Killam, there's no number in there. Again, those are large enough to.
They'd be debt exclusions.
Yeah.
And, you know, we're, what are we, about seven years out on the high school debt exclusion? Eight years?
Right here is where it ends.
And how about the library?
It's about the same time.
Year, year before. So within ten years?
So right here, it goes away, whatever year that is.
It sounds like that.
Yeah, that sounds right.
That is really a bright spot.
That really is. Our debt profile is very good. Yeah. Now, water and sewer, a little bit longer. That's a different story. But, you know, a library.
Get people going on the water and sewer.
We'll talk about that later in the week. You know, a library, the useful life, life of the library is, is hopefully, I don't know, fifty years. Now, I think under state law, we certainly couldn't have borrowed for fifty years, but we could easily borrow for twenty. And most communities would have. It's a tough call. It's a philosophical one about, do you wanna spread your costs over twenty years worth of users? That's a reasonable thing. But I offset that with your paying another five, six hundred thousand dollars in interest. Why bother?
Right, so even though the current, even though the people who are living in town now are gonna be paying the brunt of it, they also get the benefit of projects that we can now afford to do that we couldn't have.
That's exactly right. That's exactly right.
So it evens out.
That's a good way to look at it. So that, uh, I think that wraps up tonight. Tomorrow, again, you'll have a badge pinning ceremony first. I don't, I don't think there's a badge binder this time, I'm not sure.
I'll bring my kazoo out.
Put it down to, you know, a pipe and drum.
So is there, anybody, anything else that you want to add, either from the public or?
So just, just, just before we adjourn, can we just, um, go over our schedule again in terms of when we'll be discussing certain things and sort of, you know?
It's, it sounds like we'll be discussing as they come up and then major stuff on the twenty-fourth.
Yeah. You do have time on Thursday to do some of that. It's hard to know how long a presentation will take.
Right.
I would not suggest you go into any depth in philosophical issues on Thursday. Take some time to think about it.
Right.
You could start the discussion, obviously, though. If you wanna have a fee discussion, um, you'll have heard from all the departments about fees. None of the, none of tonight's departments really have a fee.
Right.
You'll start to hear that, I'll see from Jane.
And is, is the twenty-fourth a somewhat filled or is that just kind of a pocket right now where it's?
Um, right now, you will have a busy agenda till nine o'clock or so. And so at nine fifteen, I think I earmarked the rest of the night for discussion.
So we may, you know, we may even decide that we wanna add something to do between Thursday and I, twenty-fourth for another meeting. So we can discuss everything in general.
Why wouldn't we pick that?
Also, we have a financial forum though coming up too.
Yeah, you wanna talk to Mark, I'm not sure he wants to hold that, so.
The financial forum is the twenty-fifth, Mark, is that correct?
It's the one.
You're talking about or questioning if that is worth having.
Okay.
When we recover. Actually, if I may, if I could suggest, I think it's actually a perfect time to have that. Because the schools have already gone through their budget, uh, or at least presented.
The day before.
We'll, we'll, we'll have gone through at least the, you know, um, hearing through all of us. And I think.
Well, we will have gone through Bob's budget. They went through their budget.
Right. But I mean, so.
You know, we're a little bit more of a bystander in that role.
Right, but it, but it's, you know, the budget's not gone through, the pain has been di, you know, diagnosed and presented. And that's a good time to get all the boards to kind of like, let's get together.
Because we have a warrant closing when?
Uh, February twenty first.
Yeah.
February twenty first.
So we need to advance that discussion.
Warrant or.
Whatever you're gonna be on the.
Right.
Yeah, you, that's, yeah, that's a deadline you can't skip.
Right.
I, you know, I don't wanna speak for FinCom, but Mark did talk to John Dougherty and I, and, and the question was, what would FinCom accomplish that, that day?
I think you get, we'll have the trustees, we'll have the school committee, we'll have the selectmen. It's like, okay, it's all out there, let's all, let's throw some ideas out, what, you know?
But it's already been hashed over.
It's already two legs out this year. You know, the question is, are you gonna ask FinCom to go from a million to two million in free cash? I hope not.
No, no, no.
There's not a lot to do to talk about, everything.
Right.
I think what you would get, the positive side would be you have all the boards together, it'd be the first time all the groups are having a discussion. It's more of an integration session than a financial forum.
Yeah.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah, although financial forums, that's a tendency to be what we do.
Well, the first one sets the foundation, the second one is, we figure out what we know.
You're, you're describing an internal working meeting, something for the public to apply and get feedback and get information. All that has already been set up by each of our individual board. Right, so I, I guess, again, the plus side would be, it's another chance to have a big public meeting. That's, you know, if there's value in that, if we think we'll get new people to come, more people to discuss issues that they have, hash out of that, that's a positive. But in terms of.
Are you talking about the public?
Yes. Yeah. Now, these, these meetings are on TV, which is great, and people are attending. Lovely to have more people coming, obviously, we love to have that. Um, but, you know, these are some tough decisions that are coming out by each group right now. So we're, we're flexible to have it. I think the concern would be just make sure we have an agenda that is helpful for everybody.
Right. Well, uh, sometimes, at least what we've been finding over the last year or so, maybe a little longer, is that a discussion period that is less driven by a stipulated agenda, I mean, broad topics, rather than this is what we have to get done tonight. I mean, you know, the whole idea, and I think that's maybe what Barry is, I don't wanna speak for you, Barry, but we find as a board of selectmen that we get a lot accomplished in a little bit more of a free-form discussion, and maybe that's a night when that could happen. Um, I mean, you've got everybody in one room, you know, you're gonna, the, the public will have had the opportunity to both hear all of these nights, um, they will also have had the opportunity to hear, um, they've heard, you know, the presentation of the school budget. Um, they will, the night before, we're certainly gonna set aside the tail end of our meeting to, you know, um, breathe one of our conversation periods, you know, on all of these topics. Because, you know, we've been asked to by the public, right? You wanna be responsive to them. Um, I mean, the public sent us a clear message, you know, in the fall, and now the public is sending us another message, and they're saying, please consider this, please consider that. You know, I think that's kind of, we need to do that.
So maybe the twenty fifth is a good day, I mean, because we'll have, you know.
Yeah, I'm, I'm.
We're starting our discussion at nine, nine-thirty, you know, and by that time, a lot of people.
Yeah, we won't go past midnight.
Including us.
We may, we may wanna have one in before the twenty fourth as well.
I think that's a good idea, Joe. If we put a fixed date, we could decide Thursday if we still wanna do it.
Right.
That's, yeah, that's true, we could decide Thursday, just throw another debate out there. So we'll get two, two more Tuesdays in between now? Twenty fourth, is that right?
Between now and the twenty fourth?
One.
It would just be the seventeen.
Oh, you have one? I don't think they're gonna need an extra meeting and a financial forum.
I don't think so, no. I think we can accomplish it there.
I think we're, you know.
What I can tell you that's interesting is that there's a lot of, I mean, I'm getting texted during this meeting, there's a lot of discussion that isn't necessarily coming forward. It'd be great to get it out, you know, more in public.
Well, I mean, you do have to follow a certain level of, I mean, this information's gotta come out, so, I mean, there is some limitation as to how far in the, in the lead we can go, you know, right? I mean, this is, you know, the department heads gathering this way is, is critical to create those other conversations. So you can't stray too far off, you know, as we said in the writing.
So Bob, did you have something? Yeah, after, um, you know, let's say after a storm, um, one of the things that Greg Burns is especially good at is not letting us recover from the storm without first talking about what did we learn. Um, so the next day, everyone's tired, and everyone's cranky, and he drags us all in there. See, Paul's smiling back there, because he knows. And, you know, when something's fresh in your mind, that's what you do over, lessons learned. So I think the twenty fifth would be a really good time for the public and the boards to discuss, okay, we discussed an override, what did we do well, what didn't we do well, how were the communications? Um, the fact that, I have to say, the school and the town budgets that you're seeing is what was discussed last summer. Why are people surprised? You know, that's just a fundamental question to be asked. Um, did they not believe it? Did they not hear it? Um, I don't know. There's no, there's no way to know the answers, but it's not a bad time to get together and have that discussion, because there will be another step at some point in the future, whatever it is.
So maybe it's lighter on presentation.
Absolutely.
Longer on discussion.
I'd say no presentation.
I think that's.
Yeah, forget the presentation.
I mean, you need a little, you need a little presentation to get the ball rolling, and then just set a guideline.
A guideline for discussion.
It'll take some engagement.
Honestly, we could do a ten-minute presentation from the listening session to remind everyone what it said.
Yeah.
And then you'll see some similarity, a couple differences. Again, things aren't quite as bad.
So I can show ten minutes late since I left the desk.
Yeah. But again, those of us that went to all those know, but clearly, there's part of the community that did not know. Why? I don't know why.
I, it wasn't for lack of effort, I know that. Um, maybe it was for lack of attendance, maybe it was for lack of.
It was for lack of engagement.
Not, but as Bob points out, you know, what's, what we've heard tonight and what, you know, what was heard last night from the school committee? I mean, that's their budget. It's not far afield from what the discussion was last summer. I mean, I mean, nobody was crying wolf, um, last summer. Yet, you know, the voters made a decision as to what they wanted to do, and they told us what we have to do. Here we are. So, um, I do think that the twenty fifth should stay in place.
I think it's on the.
The whole discussion idea is a, is a good one, all concerned, all parties.
I assume, I assume we're here.
Or then you have a.
Let's use the library, Amy, is that a matter of?
That'd be cool.
Oh, that would be cool.
I'm sure we have a program booked that night, I'm sure.
Well, we can collect the.
The library closes at nine o'clock.
And then it's just the custodian.
I love hearing that charge.
Uh, yeah, so.
By the way, it is a great day. I've been to a couple of small community meetings.
Would you like?
It's probably a little quieter than this.
You really wanna go there?
And what can do to discuss, it's just an expensive building.
That's why you're not here today.
So I'll send the bill to you, don't I?
Are we planning to have a selectmen meeting?
I know, I know.
Yeah.
So it's twenty fifth, thirty seventh?
Yeah.
Yeah, and we'll get back, let us confer on that, Amy, we'll get back to you.
Oh, okay.
Why don't we just see if the facility's available?
So we'll wire it up for RCTV?
There you go.
This is a budget discussion, right?
Wouldn't you expect greater attendance at some, given everything that's going on? I would, I mean, I'm gonna tell everyone I don't show up at meetings, so I.
It's the venue now?
Well, I, this is not a lot of seating, this is not a lot of space. I would expect a, I mean.
We had so many empty seats in here tonight. I was shocked at the amount of empty seats in here tonight.
Yeah, I agree.
I mean, we had, literally.
We thought it was gonna be.
I, I.
I'm tired from the school committee.
Frankly, I was shocked.
You had more public last night for forty hour zoning.
We did. Last night, we had a meeting here in Concert with CPDC around zoning and marijuana discussions, and there were three or four times the amount of public participation in those discussions. I, it's hard to predict, you know? I mean, thank you for coming, and there were some other folks here as well. Um, anyway, we'll figure it out, we'll figure out.
I think there's a bitchy feet in the room.
I have a motion to adjourn for a second.
Second. All those in favor?
All right.
We're out.